School board meeting for Forest Lake area schools Thursday, July 17th to order. Please join us while we recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, member clerk, will you please take the roll call of the tenants?
Yes, all right, member Christensen?
Here.
Member Antonson is here, member Castle?
Here.
Member Rebeline?
Here.
Member Haglund?
Here.
Member Tyson is absent, and member Corcoran?
Here.
All right.
All right, we have a quorum present, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion on the agenda? All right, I would like to move to add item 7 dot 1 to address disruptive behavior by members of the public.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Can I ask, I mean, can we ask questions of what?
Absolutely.
That's about?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll actually set that up a little bit.
Okay.
During our last board meeting and a couple of other previous board meetings, we've had a number of disruptions. So I felt it would be smart to propose a motion to the board to handle disruptions and community interaction. Sooner rather than later, we do have a policy coming up on this in September for the policy committee to review, but prior to that, I think it's better to act sooner rather than later.
So is this going to be about green card behavior, kind of what's expectations, things you had talked about in the past?
Um.
Right, or just kind of guidelines?
Yeah, so my, the proposed motion I have in association with this is more how we handle disruptive behavior if we have to throw somebody out. Like reactions to that, I'd mentioned adding something to the agenda to Dr. Massey about a week or so ago, and he mentioned it would be more appropriate just to bring it to the board in a form of amendment, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the amendment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries, that brings us back to the approving the agenda as amended, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion is adopted, brings us to scheduled and unscheduled visitors, I have no green cards, so we can move on from that. Brings us to the consent agenda, is there any items 5 dot 1 through 5 dot 3 that any member would like pulled from the consent agenda? Member Hag.
5 dot 1, please.
5 dot 1? All right, 5 dot 2 or 5 dot 3? All right, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve 5 dot 1 and 5 dot 3.
2 and 3.
Yes.
2 and 3.
Yes, 5 dot, oh, sorry, 5 dot 2 and 5 dot 3.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have motion in a second to approve items 5 dot 2 and 5 dot 3, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries, brings us to 5 dot 1, entertain a motion to approve 5 dot 1.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, member Haglund?
I just want to talk a little bit about some of the vendors that are on the board bills. We've had several people in the community that have spoken up recently quite loudly about things that have been going on in the district, and those same people are vendors that we do business with, so we might want to look at doing business with vendors who are earning money on the district that they're also voicing some very harsh disruptions to. So I just wanted to make as a suggestion to the board and to administration, maybe we, maybe on an annual basis, we go through and look at the approved vendors list and make modifications to that. And then also I wanted to discuss, looks like there's some large payments for travel reimbursement, and wanted to talk more about if that's something that we should look at having it more reimbursed more timely, like within the month that, or 30 days maybe after that travel occurs instead of letting it accumulate until the end of the year.
All right, member Christensen?
Maybe member Haglund could just explain a little bit more, I haven't been contacted by anybody with concerns about vendors. I'm just wondering, who, who are we referring to, or what, is it specific vendors or for what reasons?
There are several vendors that are on the board bills periodically throughout the year that, you know, some of those business owners have come and spoken, you know, as, and stated that they are business owners, and they're still doing business with the district, so maybe we need to look into that more clearly.
Do people have first amendment rights though if they want to come and, I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding?
But they're coming in here, you know, not as a community member, but stating themselves as a business owner, and some of those are same business owners that we do business with as a district, so. Adding to the disruptions that we've had over the last few months, maybe we just need to look at that, is all I'm saying.
Could you explain just a little bit more, I'd be interested to know like who specifically, or I guess I'm not, I'm not tracking?
I don't have the board bills in front of me right now, so I just know that there's been quite a few on there, so.
So, so just to be clear, so if someone comes up and they state, I'm a, I'm a business owner, maybe as a way of explaining themselves or who they are, if, if that person is saying something negative or disruptive, if they're a business owner, then perhaps the district shouldn't do business with them, is that?
Maybe they should just address themselves as an individual, not the business then, that's all I'm saying.
All right, any other discussion, member Antonson?
I had looked at the board bills as well and just had questions as far as some very large sums for travel or what's the other reimbursement?
With the reimbursement.
Mileage, yes, reimbursements, and I, I had the same question, is all I'm saying is, is that, you know, is that prudent to fiscal management, is that helpful, or is there a bit, is, does it matter? You know, so I have a, I questioned that too.
Yeah, Ms. Tre, I can address the question on that. We reimburse employees for travel using their own vehicle. Well, we certainly don't reimburse mileage from home to work, but work, travel that's part of their, their job. Whether it's going to supervise events or itinerant teachers working between two different schools. During the school day, we're making those reimbursements. We do set kind of a benchmark to reimburse in January halfway through the fiscal year, and again by the, by June 30th. So that's why you're seeing a large number of them at this time, because it's the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. There's a difference between, I'd have to pull it up, the language, travel, mileage reimbursement, that's where we're reimbursing staff mileage, travel reimbursement is paying families or students who attend elsewhere but are residents of the district, and we're obligated to cover mileage outside the district. So from the district to their, their attending school. So that is state law, and that's what all those reimbursements are for, should they ask for reimbursement.
Yeah, I mean, I guess further the question for me was, is it, is it happening, like these larger sums, is that because it's all year or half the year, and is that helpful to financial planning for the district? To have it done that way, or should it be more regularly or quarterly or something?
I would say from a budget standpoint, if it's a large sum, you know, it's, it's still the same budget, we anticipate that.
Okay.
Whether that's in June or monthly, it's still the same impact to the budget, and we anticipate that and plan for that. On a grand scale, it's not all that large. We could certainly encourage more regular reimbursement, but I don't think it has that, it's not a disruptive element to the budget planning and budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Member Corcoran, did you have something?
No, I was just going to say that if it's in the fiscal year budget, it's not going to impact any trouble, and maybe it's not invoiced as often, and that's why it's not paid as often. So those things are tricky, and they take a while to get processed, so I know that. Yeah, going back to the, about the vendors, about the business owners, yeah, I'm, that makes me a little upset, because the people that are coming here are representing as business owners because they're, care about our district, and they're here representing their feelings about it because they must have an issue, and they just want to be heard. So I just don't want them to be penalized for coming and speaking, speaking their truth in front of us and, and wanting us to hear what they have issues with, so I just, I understand. But I mean, looking at all vendors, but I, and local vendors are, as a district, that is what we represent, that is, that's our community. I can't imagine not doing business with our local community, so that I have more questions about, if that's something we're going to be looking at in the future.
Sure, member Castle?
So what is the mileage reimbursement currently?
Mileage rate, I think, is 70 cents a mile, I'm. Yeah.
Okay, so there's one for 7,500 and some dollars, that's a lot of miles.
Yeah, I believe that's going to be our activities director, and our activities director is at almost every event, away event, whether it's in the cities or south of the cities, or up in Duluth, or state tournaments. It is a lot, and if anything, he should be encouraged to be home more than he's at events, quite honestly, but we are well represented with his presence at events, and it does add up, I acknowledge that.
Well, that's a couple times across the country. That seems excessive.
It's nearly 11,000 miles.
So was there, I'm trying to think of when we approved new contracts, and there were some that went retroactive, and I'm wondering if some of those, if the mileage was one of those items. And so that's why there's a whole bunch that look like they're all relatively the same, or like $2,000 or so. There's a whole bunch of them all in a row.
Yeah, and I believe if it's the mileage reimbursement, those are going to be, or the travel reimbursement, that's going to be student.
They're mileage ones.
The mileage ones are staff, those are all independent submissions and vouchers by individual staff members. So that's not a contractual payment.
Yeah, for some, some clarity there, member Castle, I can add to this, policy 302 is the travel expense reimbursement policy. There aren't any, any clear directives about how this is handled, it just says that travel shall be reimbursed by the IRS standard business mileage rate. There is no maximum, there's no directive on it should be expensed within a certain period of time. If I'm understanding this correctly, we encourage staff to submit the requests on kind of a semester by semester basis. My major concern when I look at that is, is it, how does this work from an accounting standpoint? I'm kind of looking back at Director Embryide on, you know, is it, is it easy to track month to month? Or is it okay to do it every six months if it's something that we account for?
So the forms that we use are monthly reimbursements, and that's what's encouraged. Fiscally, you do have all fiscal year to submit that, and again, it is budgeted in that way, and therefore it does not matter when they submitted, it's our obligation to pay whenever they do, and again, they're encouraged to do that monthly.
And is that driven by statute?
The.
That they have the annual, the full year? Or is that just been our practice?
Uh, I would imagine it would be statute based within the school year, so when you have expenses that are incurred, you have that timeframe to submit.
Okay, yeah, and I agree, and I think it's great that our staff members make it to all these events, and that they're willing to drive those miles, because getting reimbursed for mileage is not like getting paid for your time. It's a lot of wear and tear on the vehicle, it's a lot of wear and tear on your bodies.
Yeah, you will see our non-publics on there, so there was probably about 100 checks that went out for non-public families within those board bills, and again, those are from their homes to the border, the closest border. So it doesn't matter where the school is, it's just to the border, and that's per se and statute. That's done once a year because we need their attendance, so we have based on the number of days that they attend, we get that information from the non-public school, and we'll maybe reimburse the date that they attend. So that's why that's done on an annual basis and not done through the year.
Thank you for that clarification. No, I think this is a great discussion to have, because, you know, it does look a little unusual when you look at the board bills, and if you've been on the board for a while, you kind of understand why and how the practice works, but this discussion doesn't happen in front of the public a whole lot, so I think it's good to get out there. One other item I'd like to add on the approved vendors, and member Corcoran said it really well. I like the fact that we do a lot of business with local business, that we keep, we keep money in the community that we work in. But one of the things I've spoken about a lot, both during my campaign and since being elected, is trying to avoid conflicts of interest. So I do think it would be important that if a business owner is speaking, and they are here, and they are benefiting financially from an interaction they have with the district, at a minimum, we could ask that they disclose that conflict of interest before they make their comments, but I do like member Haglund's idea of looking back and seeing the vendors, making sure that we have a process to vet them, making sure that they're representing the community well, representing our district well, and that they're a business we want to interact with, I think that's definitely a good suggestion, and something that should happen on a regular basis, and I know it's something that administration is doing anyway, so. It wouldn't be that much more of a burden. Is there any more discussion on item 5 dot 1? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries, 5 dot 1 is approved. Brings us to item 6 dot 1, permission to bid serving lines, Director Embryide.
Well, as always with our bid lot, we need to go and look at our serving lines at the high school. We did the middle school last year, and we're under the high school this year. Elementarys, they don't necessarily meet the threshold to get to the thin level, but these bigger buildings do. So in order to comply with bid lot, we would like to ask permission to bid the serving lines at the high school. Most of the units there are from 2,000, so good, good life that they've lived there. There is some 20 team models also within their serving lines, and those will be repurposed on our elementary buildings. And so we can have matching sets, we're also adding a pizza line at the high school next year, so that will be very exciting out of the concessions area, which is a different part of the cafeteria, and if you've ever been at the high school, during lunch, you know it's a bit chaotic in Ed�t, so to stiff some of those kids off to the side and in a different line will be really positive for our food service programs. So with that, we will publish in the Times on July 24th and 31st the bid, and then bid opening will be August 8th. We will ask on the 21st for you guys to abort that bid, that's done, with that, administration will work on the approval.
All right, I'll kick off some questions here, the first one being, lunchtime is limited at the high school? It sounds like we're having a new line, will that help speed things up, at least we anticipate?
Yes, so part of that is about the flow, so whenever you get to have new lines, you can look at exactly that. As you said, when you get to the high school, you see that you have these two lines that come into the room, and you have to go to the other areas, so the serving lines should hopefully help that flow better.
That will be a wonderful addition, I'm actually, when I visit the high school, I try to do it over lunchtime so I can kind of observe that, because as you can imagine, and in our chairs here, that's one of the things we hear about as board members is, God, we don't get enough time for lunch, and we need more time for lunch, and it's nice to go observe it and really see that. Any other questions for Director Embryide, member Castle?
So the elementarys don't meet the threshold for having to have bids, that doesn't prevent us from having bids.
We always have to get quotes anyways, because it's over $25,000, so we send them to the exact same vendors, we just don't necessarily need to publish them.
Sure.
All right, seeing no additional questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, member clerk, will you please take a roll call?
Sure, member Antonson votes aye, member Tyson is absent, member Christensen?
Aye.
Member Castle?
Aye.
Member Rebeline?
Aye.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
And member Haglund?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
All right, motion carries, that brings us to item 7 dot 1, and Joy, I will apologize, the printed copy of this motion is sitting on my printer at home, so I will email you a copy of this after the meeting here, but the motion is quite long, and this is on the topic of addressing disruptive behavior by members of the public, and the motion is as follows. Concerning individuals who have been directed to leave school board meetings or other district events due to disruptive behavior, I move to direct administration to respond as follows. One, the individual shall be suspended from all district-related committees, advisory councils, or similar activities for a period of no less than one year. Two, should a second disruption that results in removal occur, administration will work with all relevant law enforcement agencies to file official trespass notice against the individual to include all district properties. Three, consequences of this directive are subject to appeal. A request for appeal shall be provided to the school board in writing detailing the individual extenuating circumstances in justification of the review. There is no obligation that the school board take the appeal under official consideration. And item four, this directive is retroactive dating back to June 1st, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion, or would anybody like me to read that over again? Member Christensen?
I would like you, this is not my two comments, but please read it again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, like I said, I had this printed off, and I left it sitting on my printer at home. Okay, so from the top, concerning individuals who have been directed to leave school board meetings or other district events due to disruptive behavior, I move to direct administration to respond as follows. One, the individual shall be suspended from all district-related committees, advisory councils, or similar activities for a period of no less than one year. Two, should a second disruption that results in removal occur, administration will work with all relevant law enforcement agencies to file an official trespass notice against the individual to include all district properties. Three, consequences of this directive are subject to appeal. A request for appeal shall be provided to the school board in writing detailing the individual extenuating circumstances in justification of the review. There is no obligation that the board take the appeal under official consideration. And four, this directive is retroactive dating back to June 1st, 2025. To summarize, basically what this is saying is if you have been removed from a school board meeting or a event such as a basketball game or a football game due to disruptive behavior, that you are no longer eligible to participate on committees, or advisory councils, or any type of similar activity for a period of one year from that removal. Should you do something that results in a removal again, you will then receive an official trespass notification from law enforcement, and that should this occur against an individual, they do have the right to appeal the entire board. So if, for example, you're thrown out of a football game, and you fall under subject to this, you can appeal to the board, and the board can say, well, that was a misunderstanding, that really shouldn't have occurred that way. This doesn't apply. This is some, something I was going to propose for the green card policy that is waiting for policy committee, and that won't happen until September at the very earliest, but due to the frequent disruptions that we've had in recent meetings, I felt that was imperative to get this out sooner rather than later. Yes, member Christensen?
I have several concerns with this, number one, this is the first I'm hearing about this at all, this seems to be a major policy, major policy change. Who gave input on this, I was not consulted at all about this, and I'm not yielding my time yet, so that is my number one concern. Who gave input on this, I have, this is a major policy change. I also would like to say that I had an earlier conversation about adding something onto the agenda, and I was told that I should not add anything onto the agenda if it was already past the Monday deadline, so I respected that, and I did not add what I wanted to add onto the agenda. And now this very large policy change has been added to the agenda since the Monday deadline, which I was told I was not allowed to do, and I respected that. Now, a major policy change is put on the agenda, which the public is not here to see or have any information on. I have not had any time to review or research this policy. I believe that this is a free speech issue, which we would need to look into a little bit more. How will this be handled equally? I mean, I was not on the board during COVID, but I've heard a lot of things about that. I can imagine that there were a lot of disruptions during COVID, that was a very stressful time to be on the board. Again, I wasn't here, but something as major as this was not suggested during that time. When people were very upset, I heard there was almost some sort of a fistfight or something, and this policy was not suggested at all during that time. I also have a major concern that this is retroactive. People don't know that, people need to know that. I don't think, I think if we are going to implement something like this, I certainly don't think that we can make it retroactive. People had, people had no idea, so now you're being punished for something that you didn't know. In the past, you would have been able to do that, and now you're going to be punished, and you didn't know that. So I have a major concern about it being retroactive. And thirdly, I'm sure I have more, but thirdly, I believe that we are targeting individuals who spoke negatively at the board meeting, which is their free speech right to do. And I'm also, that also concerns, again, with what member Haglund was saying about vendors. I'm thinking about people like Forest Lake Floral, which is owned by Mayor Roberts. I assume the school district does business with them, we do, the school district does business with the Forest Lake Times, you know, other groups like that, so I'm, I'm really concerned in the direction that the board is going with this, this kind of talk about almost sort of, I don't know, some sort of retribution or something. I do not believe that we can retaliate against individuals or businesses for, you know, for exercising their constitutional right to free speech, even if the speech is critical. So yeah, major concerns, but number one concern is who, who, who gave input? This is the first I've ever seen that, so if you could address that.
That's my motion, so I can, I can try to address your questions, I should have written them down here as we went, but I brought this to the attention of Dr. Massey last week and mentioned that I wanted to have it be part of the agenda proposal. He felt it was more appropriate to have it be an amendment here, which is always in order, we can always amend the agenda when we, we come to the boardroom. So if our discussion earlier, if I suggested that that wasn't in order, I apologize for that. You could have brought the other issue that you wanted to as an amendment to the agenda, you always can. I have not really discussed the details of this specific motion with anybody. This is, this is something that I was thinking of because of the challenges that I had maintaining quorum in the meeting, and recognizing that it just keeps continually getting worse. There's some very vocal, very hyperbolic groups that are aiming to create disruption. We spent in our last board meeting over an hour taking public input, and some of those same individuals who gave public input felt it was important enough to disrupt our work, to interrupt us during the, during our meeting. I think it's critically important that we try to maintain quorum, this is our meeting, we need to be able to have it. Taking public input is extremely valuable, but there's a time for that, and there's a time for us to be able to do our work, and this clearly delineates that. I'm trying to remember that, all the points that you went through. As far as prior notice to community members, I think it can be a very safe assumption that if you disrupt a government meeting, that there are consequences for doing that. I have not studied state law on that specific point, but I do know that there are federal laws in place that if you disrupt official government proceedings, it's a felony. I don't know if that's applicable here, but I don't see why it wouldn't be. It just happened to a House representative, I believe he pulled a fire alarm to disrupt House proceedings. I don't know that that was ever prosecuted, but it is a violation of law, and it should be taken seriously, so. What, what points of inquiry that you had there may have I missed, I want to make sure I covered them all.
Yes, who gave input, you answered that, it being retroactive, again, just like targeting individuals. I mean, I think it's fair to say that one of the people that got asked to leave the meeting is Karen Moorhead. I mean, are we asking, is this applying to Karen Moorhead that for the next year, she will not be able to be on any committees, I mean, is that? I, I agree with you, member Rebline, that people should not be able to disrupt our meeting, I agree wholeheartedly with that. If someone pulled a fire alarm, or someone, you know, yelled fire, or did something really super disruptive, I, I agree completely. But there, I mean, disruption is sort of in the eye of the beholder. I mean, I agree that those folks were passionate, and I don't even know if I'd use the word disrupted the meeting. I mean, they were out of order, and they shouldn't have spoken, I'll, but to, to claim that what Karen Moorhead said is enough to have her, you know, effectively banned for a year, that is a bridge too far. I mean, I can get on board maybe with a little bit of this, but I have some major, you know, major concerns.
That, that does remind me too, that that was the big reason that I wrote in the appeal process here. If, you know, like, like I said, if somebody is removed from a football game, and we find that the infraction wasn't that great, or there wasn't reason for it, or during a board meeting, the infraction wasn't that great, the board always has the ability to reverse it. reverse a decision like that if the request is made. So that, that was the intent of the, the appeal process.
Well, I would also kind of say, maybe let's like not kid ourselves. I mean, if someone that, that we don't like, or you, the majority doesn't like, that said something that the majority doesn't like, they're going to appeal, and you're not going to pass. I mean, I, I think we can say that there's an appeal process. I mean, I, I don't, I'd be surprised, I guess, if anyone's appeal was actually turned over, but yeah.
All right, Member Corbin.
I agree with Member Christiansen on a lot of the points. I guess it's really hard to reprimand people after the fact. I mean, if you don't know what's going to happen when you are speaking, and then you come back and say, "By the way." So I agree, like, there has to be guidelines, there has to be rules to keep order, and I totally understand that. And maybe going forward, we have a more of a, like, I know you read, you know, what you expect out of people, but people were very upset, they were compassionate, they were, you know, maybe they were a little, you know, because these topics that we're talking about are very true and endear to people's hearts. I mean, they're very compassionate about the way they're feeling. So things were, emotions were high, and, and as we all know, when you care about something, you might go a little over the top because you're so upset. But to come back later and to tell them, like I said about Karen, you know, I get going forward, we can have a more, you know, definitely a more, you know, rules and things that we have to follow, but I don't believe in going retroactive to people. I just don't think that they should pay, do the brunt, and when they haven't even been told the full ramifications of what their actions were. That's very excessive, and I think that's just going to come back and be worse as our board. People are going to be very upset, and it just, it's not going to go well. So I think, like I say, I'm on board with having some rules and guidelines, and I think that's important, but I, I really don't agree with that.
With the retroactive?
Retroactive. I, I don't believe that, that is, and like I say, people were very heated and very upset because it was very, it was an emotional meeting. It was very emotional, and people got, you know, because maybe they, they just wanted to be heard. So I don't want to take that away, but having guidelines in place and maybe have them printed, or we leave them by the door, have people have clarity for their, what their actions will be, I agree with that, but not to go backward. I, I don't think that's fair.
Okay. Any other discussion? Member Castle?
So it's not about speech, it's about the disruption. That's what it's about. If people get carried away so bad that they must be removed, it's the removal part. It has nothing to do with free speech, just like symbols have nothing to do with free speech. If you're triggered by that, perhaps you need some education. But I would like to know if there's a difference between, so if somebody's at a football game, and they're disrupted so much that the police haul them away, is there going to be a difference between that and if they're asked to leave, and they leave on their own volition?
Dr. Massey, I'll let you address that, because I believe that's when we would file a trespass notification immediately.
Yeah, it's fortunately not all that frequently that we're in those situations at athletic events. Usually, it's a matter of asking somebody to leave, and they comply. I think it's pretty rare that we have to get police involved to remove somebody from an event. Mr. Caldwell, I don't know, Member Chair, if there's anything you want Mr. Caldwell to add, but...
Maybe you want to hear?
Jerry loves that very often.
And then would that also apply to future games that they would have wanted to attend as opposed to committees and things?
We don't have a explicit guideline or policy on that, but that's a case-by-case situation.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Member Haglund?
I don't think it's really a fair excuse to say it. They were, they were passionate, they didn't know, because especially member, former board members should know better what the, what the decorum should be. They were warned several times by the chair, asked politely to not be disruptive, but we are doing our work. I mean, I go back and forth on the retroactive portion of it, because that last meeting was disrupted so heavily. I lean towards doing the retroactive punishment because of how out of hand it got at times. Normally, I probably wouldn't be in favor of that. I'm torn on that piece. But to say that they didn't know better, they were, they've been warned, they've been, they were asked nicely, this is a professional meeting, they should know better. And, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the disruption is coming from the same people who say, "Your words matter," coming from the anti-voting group, yet those people and those groups are the same ones that have been sending threatening messages, harassing, and getting upset because of our words. Well, don't our words matter? They, they keep claiming free speech rights and everything else, but their free, your free speech rights are only good as long as you agree with them. So as soon as you have a differing opinion, then they start screaming the loudest and start making noise, and when you try to say, "No, this has got to be a professional meeting," then they get upset. So I, I like the amendment. I, I'm back, torn on the, the retroactive piece of it, but I, I do think we need to put some structure in it, and maybe this could have waited until the policy committee got it. But due to the extreme disruptiveness of the last couple of meetings, I do agree with the chair that we probably shouldn't wait because it could just continue to snowball.
Member Christiansen, oh, Member Antonson.
She can go ahead.
Okay, Member Christiansen.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, Member Haglund, but it sounds to me that you're, that you're kind of familiar with this amendment or policy. It makes me feel like, the way you were talking about it, that you've seen it before. I mean, it's pretty...
Out of order. It seems like I'm being accused of something there, Member Chair.
Yeah, short of...
Because I have not seen or heard this prior to this, so that seems like an inappropriate accusation by another board member.
Yeah, please, please keep your comments. Jermaine, direct.
I was just going to say, it, it, it seems like a lot to take in when we've just heard this, and I'm not, you just were saying the points quickly, and maybe you under, you know, you understand things a lot.
I took notes.
Yeah, I did too. I did too. So I'm just saying.
Member Antonson.
Okay, so I agree, we need to get something because last week, or the last meeting was highly contentious, and there were a lot of disruptions, and I wholly believe in First Amendment rights, but I don't believe that gives somebody the right to get up there and start calling board members' names. That is not okay. And I agree with what you said, you know, the person in question that you're referring to, Ms. Moorhead, I mean, I have a lot of respect for her and the work she's done in the community, and she, she does know better. And she stood up and said, "Oh, I know you're going to kick me out," like it's some sort of joke, like, this whole thing is a joke because we, there's certain people up here that don't agree with what she's saying, or how the way she thinks it should be. And that's just not what it's about. I mean, it isn't about where somebody's wrong because we don't agree with you. That's the whole big picture, that we need to come around to a way to figure out how to work within this space of, we have differences of opinion, how can we be functional and work together to make things better? And it's not going to happen with people getting up there and starting to call half the board racist, homophobic, and expect to be able to sit there and rant things off like that. And it's not going to happen when we have former board members who are involved in many different community things talking about how horrible we are because we don't agree. So something needs to be put in place. I agree, I think the retroactive thing is tough, and I don't know what I think about that either.
I can speak more to the retroactive piece to it, because I, I think we're all struggling with that, and I struggled with it myself. And my breaking point on the retroactive was the, the number of direct threats that I've received, the threats I've received against my family, the threats that I know other board members have received against their families, the threats of violence, the deliberate and pointed, specific attacks towards specific board members. And when I, when I take, put that into context with the violent nature of, of these hate groups that are coming after elected officials these days, up to and including murdering them just in the past few weeks, and I received death threats that day too. State representative was murdered, and I, I got phone calls later that day threatening me. We have to draw a line somewhere, and that's where I, I sided on adding the language to make it retroactive. Is there any other discussion?
Well, I just have a question. Okay, so I know, and I'm incredibly sorry you're getting those. It's not okay. It's not okay in any world. But I feel like the emails you're receiving and the green cards that people, I mean, they're separate, you're kind of lumping them together because they are kind of interrelated, but I feel like you're taking extra retribution on the people that came and spoke, and not, I mean, the emails are separate. So I just feel like, I just think that that should be not treated the same and not looped together.
I, I understand, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I say...
Like, like Member Antonson was saying, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not concerned about disagreement. I like disagreement. I don't like disagreement, but I'd like being able to talk through disagreement, because a lot of times disagreement brings you to a better, a better end goal, or a better, better solution in the end. We had a contentious meeting a few weeks ago, but we came up with a solution at the end, and seven of us found a way to support something as a group.
Six.
Well, six voted for it, but, but the seven of us, we, we made that decision in the end, and it happened through discussion. And from, from my point of view, what I want is, I want good discussion, I want, I want good back and forth, I want constructive discussion, which is why I think the public comment is so important. But once we, once we move beyond public comment, we need to have order in the room, and we need to have, be able to, to maintain quorum. And the last thing I wanted to do that night, a couple of weeks ago, was to clear the room. And we got very close several times where we had to clear the room, and I hate throwing people out, but my fear is, is that if we are not aggressive in establishing clear parameters that we will maintain order, that it's going to continue to snowball out of Any other discussion on this?
I would, I would like to make a, a motion that we table this because it seems like such a very big policy, major policy issue, and I would like more time to think about it and review it, and see if there's any policy, procedures, state laws, anything that we need to be following. I'm just not familiar enough with what we're talking about to feel comfortable.
Okay, did, did you want to table it, or did you want to postpone it to a specific date and time?
I would like to make a motion to table it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on tabling it. Any discussion on tabling it? Member Antonson.
Like I said, I think we need to get something in place that's clear. Perhaps it doesn't have to be all of this, if it's, I mean, can we just possibly amend the original thing, or, you know, get some of it in place?
Once we dispose of the motion and the table right now to table it. Yeah, so amendment would be in order.
I can...
Yeah, Member Christiansen.
I just, I just feel like, like what's, what's the rush, I guess? You know, I'm just wondering whether we table it, or I, maybe I have the wrong word, but we could, we could bring this up the next meeting. I mean, Member Tyson isn't here. We could bring it up the next meeting, people, you, you, you know, you didn't, and maybe you meant to have a copy for us here, I'm not sure. But you said you left it on your printer, which happens, that's no big deal, but I just feel like something this major, we need to get it right, and we need to talk about it. And I agree that, that yes, we cannot keep having meetings where people are standing up. I, I agree with that wholeheartedly. I just, I just, can we, can we just come together, you know, and, and kind of try to agree on, on something? I just, I, it makes me really nervous that this was kind of just, you know, sprung on us, for lack of a better word. I mean, there's, you know, it, I would really like to table it, or whatever the word is, postpone it to even the next meeting. Just give us, you know, two weeks to review or, or think about this, or come up with our own ideas, or whatever.
And I think, Member Tyson, too, I mean, this is a really very important thing to put in place. I'd like to get her input, too. I think that's, and she's a very senior board member, and I think it'd be nice to get her, her opinion about this policy. So, I mean, I think postponing to the next meeting, I think is, I think it's a very good compromise for us, and gives us more time to kind of look into this. And like I said, it's not impacting this meeting, so if we get it in place for next meeting, that'd be good.
Any other discussion on the motion to table? My, my only concern at the motion to table is kind of like I addressed this earlier is, we had the green card policy, it's not officially the green card policies, but there's two policies that kind of tie together to, to take care of our, our green card procedure. That was something that we presented to the committee in May. The committee did not have adequate time to really address those policies, so we decided to punt that work until September. And then, of course, over the summer, it became a problem, which is my biggest concern about tabling this. My preference would be to pass this, understanding that it's probably not perfect, and arguably, it might even be a little aggressive, but that's something that we can sort out in September and codify into policy relatively quickly after that. So that, that would be my preference on the, the motion to table. Any other discussion on the motion to table? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of tabling the item signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Okay, the motion to table fails. That brings the original question back, going back to Member Antonson's first question. It would be appropriate to amend it. We have run into limitations on discussion, so if, if it pleases the board, we will suspend the rules on discussion for the remainder of this motion.
Second.
We don't need a second. If there's no objection, okay, we will, we'll go ahead and suspend the rule on discussion for the remainder of this discussion. Member Antonson.
Okay. We're talking about the potential amendment here to your...
Yeah, yeah, so we're back to the main motion, which I'm happy to repeat, or if people have good notes.
I have the basics here.
All right.
It sounds to me like the most contentious thing about it is that it's just new here tonight, and that it would be retroactive. I mean, there is the, within your motion, or your proposal here to suspend someone from district committees and advisories, any subsequent, any subsequent disruptive behavior would involve then law enforcement, and then they could also appeal the board. What if we just took out the retroactive and just make it known that if someone is suspended, like the other three points that you made, suspension from, or being removed from the boardroom would mean a suspension of, you're talking about school board committees. I mean, obviously, those are the only things we can...
Board committee, Hall of Fame committee, finance discussions, we're going to, we're going to discuss the finance tonight, so we may have a levy committee at some point. Really, any involvement like, like that, yeah.
What if we just took off the retroactive piece?
Is that a, a motion to strike item four?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to strike the directive that it is retroactive dating back to June 1st. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, before moving to a vote, I'll, I'll say again, I, I struggled with that one myself, so that's why I wanted to bring it to the board and say this is a possibility. If there's no other discussion on that?
So can I just go over it one more time before, so I have more clarity about the motion? So this would be for all green cards going forward, and I mean, we would have clear information for them, the rules, so if this happens, this is what we'll, so you'll read it, you can probably have it printed, and you can, it'll be really out there for people to know. If they do anything, they'll be the one year, and they appeal, and I mean, I believe, I mean, I don't believe that people will even get a second. I mean, if they're truly going to be, you know... I mean, if they're truly going to be, you know, be suspended, then they'll be suspended. So, yeah, as long as I think it's going to have to, you just have to be really clear with people so they know what the expectations are and what will happen if they break the rules. So, yeah, this is, because it's, I mean, a year's a long time. So, I wish it wasn't a year. That seems excessive, but I don't know. Is that up to negotiations or is that?
Everything's up to negotiation.
Up to six? I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, I understand people like can be, go over the top and be very upset about things and maybe not, you know, long, but if you get a warning and then they still, I get it. You give them a warning, usually you're very good about giving warnings. And they, then they should know that what would happen if they get a warning and they're not listening. But a year, I mean, I don't know, a year seems excessive, but.
I'm going to interrupt you there because it's not germane to the current amendment. So, the amendment that we have on the table right now is to strike the retroactive portion. So, if we pass this tonight, it would be effective July 17th moving forward.
Okay.
So, all passed behavior would essentially be given a pass.
Okay.
If you're interested in another amendment, we can, we can handle that once we settle this.
Okay.
If there's any more discussion on striking the retroactive nature.
I agree with that.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor of striking the retroactive nature and making this effective on July 17th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries, so item four would be stricken. So, that brings us back to the main motion. And just for clarity, I will reread it now as it is amended. Concerning individuals who have been directed to leave school board meetings or other district events due to disruptive behavior, I move to direct administration to respond as follows. One, the individual shall be suspended from all district-related committees, advisory councils, or similar activities for a period of no less than one year. Two, should a second disruption that results in removal occur, administration will work with all relevant law enforcement agencies to file an official trespass notice against the individual to include all district properties. And just for clarity, a legal trespass notice is subject to one year. That does last a full year. And three, consequences of this directive are subject to appeal. A request for appeal shall be provided to the school board in writing detailing the individual extenuating circumstances and justification of the review. There is no obligation that the board take the appeal under official consideration. That is now the motion on the table. As stated earlier, we have suspended the rule for limitations of discussion for the remainder of this motion. Is there any additional discussion, Member Haglund?
Just kind of maybe more of a point of clarification. So, if we adopt this as it is amended now, would this potentially be going into the policy committee's changes then? So, I mean, if, when this policy goes to the committee and they do their work, this might change in that policy. So, really what we're doing is we're bridging from now until the committee gets this work done, correct?
Yes, yeah, or until we adopt whatever policies the committee returns.
Okay, so maybe that piece of information is helpful as well, is that this isn't a long-term policy. We're basically building a bridge until this policy, so that's going to go to the policy committee anyway. That work's going to get done. They might take whatever we decide to do here tonight and maybe they decide to make changes to it, adopt it, whatever. But at least then we have something in place from now until that new policy is adopted. So, we have some structure in place and some, some rules of order for the members who attend the meetings. So, we don't have the disruptions like we've been seeing in the past. And I think with that clarification, to me, it seems even more reasonable.
Member Christensen?
No, you go ahead.
I just, let me gather my thoughts for a second. So, Member Corkin, I think, was maybe going to make a motion about the one year.
I was, I was thinking about it.
And, and we can talk about, let's just discuss that, I guess. But for me, one year does seem excessive. You know, let's just look back this last year. You know, we did the redistricting committees. We did the reimagine committees. We did, you know, I mean, does this include, you know, like the PTOs or, you know, what? I mean, that, that seems a little vague to me, committees. The Hall of Fame committee, I mean, that's, that's kind of a big deal. People enjoy being on that. So, I'd like to think about the one year being a little excessive and the overarching all the committees. I mean, that could have some unintended consequences. I think there could be a lot of committees in there that we're maybe not thinking about. But, but another thing that kind of jumps out at me is you're saying that this would include sports as well. And I have some thoughts about that. But I do think that even though we're saying that sports were included in this, I think this really is still just focusing on the board. Because somebody who goes to a football game and gets mad and gets kicked out, they're probably not on, you know, the policy committee or the levy committee or the hall. I mean, maybe they are, but, but maybe they're not. And I do think, you know, as far as sports go, and maybe Mr. Caldwell could speak to that a little bit, but I get, I'm just not sure how much the school board wants to get involved with maybe things that happen at a sporting event. Because like here, we know what happened. I feel like we could agree on what happened and there's cameras and, and we know what happened. But I feel like, I don't know, if there's a dispute at a football game or a lacrosse game, I mean, none of us are maybe there. There's maybe not any cameras. Maybe somebody saw it, maybe, you know, so I'm a little concerned about, I mean, I'm concerned about a lot of things, but I'm concerned that this covers sports because I feel like it, it doesn't really cover sports. I feel like this, if, if, if what happened at the last board meeting wouldn't have happened, I don't think we would be talking about this. So, I feel like this is a, a school board policy, not necessarily like a sport policy. And I don't know if Mr. Caldwell has any thoughts on that or not. But I think that's all I had at this time.
Member Antonson?
Well, I agree with Member Christensen's point there because that was one of the questions I had, too, was we're not going to be able to keep straight from sports and other, you know, venues outside of this arena and the committees that are related to the board or school committees per se. I, I, yeah, I think that's a good point of how do you delineate, so.
Hearing that, seeing some nods around the room, I could propose an amendment to strike or other district events, just to remove that ambiguity and just make this for school board meetings. As Member Haglund mentioned, this will be going, if, if all the scheduling works, this would go to the policy committee as early as September. I have to remember back, I don't remember specifically what other policies we've sent to committee for September, but I know we're, as we work through the MSBA model conversion, there's going to be, the policy committee is going to be very busy this year. But if that goes well in September, it would be back to us for first reading and approval as early as November. So, we don't, we're not covering a wide gap here. So, I, I think it's okay if we're a little bit more descriptive in some of the language we have or like your, your suggestion about one year being too long. I think that's a good discussion point, too. So, I would entertain a motion to strike or other district events and have this read instead concerning individuals who have been directed to leave school board meetings due to disruptive behavior.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that amendment. Member Haglund?
The only, because I agree with Member Christensen's assessment that this seems very much related to recent events at school board meetings, not necessarily games or a concert or something else. So, I agree that it should be contained to our business here because that's really what the disruption seems to have been is us getting our work done. I would also just ask that it's not just the board meetings, but maybe the committee meetings as well. Not that we've had any disruptions at all that I'm aware of, but if something were to come up where a policy committee or a member, remember that these hot, finance meetings are, get pretty heated sometimes. If somebody were to get disrupted there, I think it should also cover those. I fully would be a 100% floored if that ever happened, but I think you get what I'm saying.
The, the policy committee does get a little heated. So, I'll move to amend the amendment to read directed to leave school board meetings or committee meetings due to disruptive behavior.
Second.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the amendment to add committee meetings? Okay. Member Antonson?
So, I just wanted to bring back up the.
Is this on adding the committee piece?
Is it on adding?
If not, let's dispose of that really quick.
Okay, I don't think it actually is.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so we have, now we're back to the amendment, which is now to leave school board meetings or committee meetings.
Okay.
Or board committee meetings. Sorry, Member Antonson, please go, please proceed.
Well, when we're talking about disruptive behavior, one other place that we have received this kind of thing is through email. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If these are people in our community, I think, I don't know who gets to decide whether it's threatening or, or, you know, whatever. But I think that should be included in here as well, like that you, you can't do that. You can't threaten and hope people die in a puddle or whatever they have said.
I like where your discussion's going, but I'm going to pull it back because we, we do have an amendment on the table now to strike or other district events. So, let's, let's settle that. Come back to the main motion. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that carries. Now, we're back to the main motion, which is now concerning individuals who have been directed to leave school board meetings or board committee meetings due to disruptive behavior. We moved to direct administration and we kept one, two, and three. One being that you're off any related committees, advisory councils, et cetera, for no less than a year. Two being an official law enforcement trespass notice. And three, the right to appeal. Member Christensen?
I have a question. And I appreciate, you know, Member Haglund's thoughts on adding it to a committee. But I guess my question, and maybe we've already voted on this, but my question is, who gets to determine if it's disruptive in a committee? Because if it's indisruptive in here, I mean, I guess, you know, we have cameras or something like that. And I'm not saying this is going to happen, but what if, you know, we're in policy committee or, I don't know, and, and maybe someone says something that someone thinks is disruptive? Not like getting out of your chair or, or, you know, something obvious. But I don't, I'm just, I'm just envisioning in, I don't know, some of these committees, someone could say something, do something that someone else could find disruptive? How are we going to, how, what do we do there?
I, I think I can address that with basically the, the process we use in our board meetings is it takes either, well, it, it, it takes a request from me to leave as a board chair because it's my responsibility to maintain quorum in the room. Every one of our committees has an assigned chair member or chairperson. So, in the case of policy committee, the director Freeman would be the one that would make that choice on whether or not somebody needed to be removed. I don't see this really applying like, I saw a law enforcement official at the meeting here tonight, like say we were doing our work and they came in and they decided some, law enforcement decided somebody needed to be removed for a reason that wasn't causing a disruption. That wouldn't apply. This would really only apply if, you know, somebody was causing a disruption in the audience and, and I was forced to stop the meeting or another member called a point of order and, and pointed out that, hey, this is being disruptive to the work that we're doing. We need to have that person removed. And then we had to direct that person to leave. So, I see the same process following out, or following through for committees, only going through the committee chair rather than.
Well, and to be clear, I, excuse me, to be clear, I don't foresee something like that happening in the committees, but since you added committees, I just, or since we added committees, I just wanted to.
And I sure hope not.
Yeah.
Like, I, I hope we never see this again. I, I looked, I actually looked back at the, the video of the last board meeting and, and every person that I had to ask to leave to, to kind of review that and make sure it was appropriate. And that, that was actually why I threw the, the appeal process in here because it's very easy in the heat of the moment, especially when you're sitting here with the gavel that you, you get a little bit emotional and maybe you overreact and maybe in hindsight, well, that person didn't need to be removed. And it gives the board an opportunity to fix that and it makes it very clear. So, that, that was my thought on that process. Does that answer your inquiry there? All right, any other discussion, Member Castle?
So, the overarching theory is that it has to be severe enough for them to be removed. It's not just any disruption. It's, it's a severe enough disruption for them to be removed. And I also noticed that it doesn't prevent them from attending the meetings. It just prevents them from being in, in the advisory position or on the committee.
Yeah, because disruption's going to occur in, you know, any number of ways. Somebody can start coughing and that, that is a disruption to the meeting, but not one that we would typically remove somebody for. Member Corkin?
Myther, of course, I, the one year. I know we talked about that. I know I've been in different things and, and I, you know, I don't know if anyone's ever been, you know, been asked to leave, but normally there's punitive, like three meetings or, you know, there's some number or you're out for as long, even like in sports. I mean, there's, there's different things for different events and, and different ways. But a year is a long time, especially if, like I say, people are upset. I mean, they go over the top and they're not normally like, I mean, we don't know what the circumstances are. It seems like that's a very severe way to keep them out, especially if they're active members of our community that are involved in a bunch of things and all of a sudden now they can't do any of that and there may be valuable assets to some of these committees. So, I don't know. I think a year's a long time. Maybe, I, I would like to have some, I know we have the appeal process, but there might be another way to look at that.
Okay.
I don't know what that would be, but I, I, I think a year is a long time. So, maybe it's three months, maybe it's six months. I don't know what the magic number is, but I think that could be adjusted. Maybe that's more of a policy committee thing. I don't know, but fiscal year is, you know, it depends on, I mean, there's a lot of ways we can look at it, so. Just have some idea.
Member Antonson?
Well, you were saying earlier that it's going to go to the committee again here in September, October. Come first reading, you know, basically we're not going to even be having, whatever this ends up being finalized until November-ish. Maybe we just say through 2025 for now and be done with it. It's less than six months, right? At this point, it would be less than six months. Everybody's being very hospitable this evening. I don't think we're going to keep having problems. I hope we don't, but.
No.
Member Haglund?
I would move to change it from one year to six months. Or move to amend, I should say.
Move to amend.
One year to six months.
I will, I will second that. I, I think that makes a lot of sense, so.
My, my reasoning behind that is six months gets us to November. Policy committee will have a chance, they can make their changes, recommendations to it and bring it back to us again. So, I think six months is a, a workable compromise to get us to that point.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on six months. Any more discussion around that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now we, we've got this very amended. Do you want me to, to read it from the top again or do you want to?
I just have a, or however you want. I have a procedural question because, so, so what, so just back this up a little bit. So, so you guys, or we keep saying that we're going to send it to the policy committee. So, this, so what, this is a directive to administration. What are you calling this is my question? And then it does go to the policy committee, which I think is, is really great. The policy committee can review it. But I also feel like there has been some times recently where the board has not taken the, the recommendations of the policy committee. So, I do feel like just because we keep saying we're going to send it back to policy, which, which is great, we should do that. I'm not confident that if the policy committee comes up with different suggestions or whatever that it, that it would change.
I, I can address that, Member Christensen. We actually sent policy number 1103, which is complaints, students, employees, parents, and other persons. And then policy number 1206, which is public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings and data privacy considerations. I see these directives falling into one or both of those policies. And I've kind of dubbed them the green card policies because they deal with interaction between the public and the board. The primary premise behind those two policies right now as a, supplied by MSBA, is primarily to keep public comment from, a bridge. to keep public comment from abridging into like private data concerns, or getting into staffing concerns, or that type of thing, so this would be an add-on to this. The language that we're discussing here tonight was not part of that original proposal in May. It wasn't, the scenario of having multiple people stand up during board meetings and scream at the board wasn't something that I had anticipated occurring, so it wasn't something that I felt was necessary to be in the policy, but after happening multiple meetings in a row, and having the audience respond in a very dismissive manner when we've asked for order, it's obvious that there are some community members that cannot handle being respectful at a meeting, so it's something I think we should address. So those are the two policies where I would suggest we make the changes, they are already slated to go back to policy committee in September. So that brings us back to the main motion, I'm gonna start from the very top here on where we are now, because we've had a couple of amendments. So it reads as follows, concerning individuals who have been directed to leave school board meetings or board committee meetings due to disruptive behavior, move to direct administration to respond as follows. One, the individual shall be suspended from all district-related committees, advisory councils, or similar activities for a period of no less than six months. Two, should a second disruption that results in removal occur, administration will work with all relevant law enforcement agencies to file an official trespass notice against the individual to include all district properties. Three, consequences of this directive are subject to appeal. A request for appeal shall be provided to the school board in writing detailing the individual extenuating circumstances and justification of the review. There is no obligation that the board take the appeal under official consideration. With that, is there any other discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, Member Corcoran, please take a roll call.
I will. Okay, Member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Tyson is absent, Member Christensen?
No.
Member Rebeline?
Aye.
Member Anderson votes aye, Member Castle?
Aye.
Member Haglund?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
All right, the motion carries, that brings us to item 8.1, School Board Work Session Financial Review Levy Planning, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're actually excited tonight to spend some time working through the district's financial picture and doing a fairly high-level overview. Some of this will be redundant for many of you from previous conversations that we've had along, the training sessions for the board, as well as other conversations with respect to finance committees, audit reviews, but it's an opportunity for us to kind of benchmark and put on the table the current state of the district finances. By design, the presentation is somewhat high-level, not at the granular level. So it'll be an opportunity for the board to see the bigger picture with respect to district finances, and at the end of the presentation, you will see what administration considers opportunities, constraints, as we look to move forward, as we model out current, our current budget parameters and variables into the future. We are not here tonight to make any decisions, administration is clearly making a recommendation to the board that this not be an opportunity to make any recommendations or any decisions with respect to future actions with respect to the district finances. At the very least, it'd be an opportunity to ask administration to bring additional information to the board should you need or want additional information. We then can look to additional resources, lean on our ailers consultants to assist with that, and we've got the opportunity in August, September to do that. All of this to bring the board to, well-prepared, I should say, to really analyze where we're at, and what does the future look like, and what opportunities does the district have to address the district finances as we move forward. There are a number of levers that the district has and the board has, but again, tonight we're not looking to make any decisions with respect to future decisions or actions for the district. So with that, we've got a presentation. Thank you Director Idy, Renberg Idy, for all the work preparing this.
That's really nice.
We'll work through it and certainly answer questions along the way.
I believe being that it's a work session, we're more in the mode of just not presentation style, but just more chatting, so we have our slides up there, but I'll not be doing the big presentation.
Not to interrupt, but you have this presentation in your email, if you want to follow along electronically, you also have a paper copy, please try and view as well.
So for tonight, starting out, the first thing that Dr. Massey addressed starting a little bit is, we'll start to go over the general fund, because we're all gonna spend the majority of time, because that's really all of our other tasks, and where we need to talk about some of the challenges that we're facing. Enrollment drives that, so we're gonna dig into that a little, where does our revenue come from, and then where's our money spent? And we're gonna spend some time on fund balance. The other funds, although listed there and very important, again, don't necessarily play into some of our biggest challenges in the operations of this district, and what we're seeing for the future in the next five years. I also want to take a moment to talk about school finance in general. So we know that we have a ledger report, that's forty-some pages of math, three columns wide, little print, you know, ten-point font and all that good stuff. Our one calculation for general education resources is thirteen pages of calculations on all the different areas. So we know that school finance has its challenges in how it's, you know, processed and understood, and the constraints that go along with that. So tonight, we'll be doing high-level stuff, we'll be talking about a lot of the areas, we're not talking about all the areas either. So if there's a point that you're saying, wait a minute, what about this, or why wasn't it in the presentation, generally, we could be here all night, right? So we're, you know, again, doing that high-level point to all of this. So with the complexities of it, please let me know if there's questions, but just acknowledging that the way that it's set up just does create some problems around it. So looking at enrollment, starting with that, it's the largest driver of revenue, state aid, and then local levy, so it's really important that we look at the declining enrollment. That we've seen, we know the number of resident, school-aged children has declined in the past decade in four secondary schools, and that's a problem. So again, districts that see that increased enrollment on an annual basis are not only being able to get those increases that we have in per pupil allocation, they're able to realize that full amount, but they're also able to realize more, because they have more students. So declining enrollment matters in those two ways. We don't see, when we get two and a half percent, that's not what we're seeing in our books, and we're gonna get into that a little bit. We do see the projected housing, the decrease in students to slow over the next several years, which is really great. This is the slide that you saw during our We Imagine work, and showing that again, we can see the past decade of how the enrollment K-12 has declined. You can also see that green line there, being the basis moving forward, you don't get the housing development, we have a blue line, and we kind of get the middle area of housing development and growth, and we have the yellow line, and we have accelerated housing and growth. So this is the teamwork study. What I want to say about that is we've also worked several years with Hazel Reinhardt, who has numbers that are a little bit lower than this. So when we look at that green line, her numbers would be a little bit below that. When we have enrollment too, I'm going to say that we have to be conservative in that enrollment, we're saying we see the white glare eyes, and that is the enrollment that we count. And that matters to us, because we have a low fund balance. If we're wrong on enrollment and our revenue doesn't work, then what we need to do is go ahead, and we don't have the fund balance in order to stop that, to get that gap that we created in the budget. So projecting enrollment conservatively is a very big deal for the school district with a low fund balance. We also look at the housing market, and where it's gone, and how fast it's going to accelerate. You know, you talk about driving by development and seeing houses, that also slows at some point in time, as inflation comes in, and interest rates, and other factors. So we have to be monitoring and watching that, and making good decisions in those areas. So it is really important, again, another factor that we have in enrollment in school districts is charter schools. So having charter schools in the district does matter, people do have choices of district transportation available to them. So again, in that enrollment and being conservative, you will hear me, you will hear me just talk a lot about that, and also even during budget time, you'll hear me say about conservative enrollment, and again, largest driver of revenue, if you get that wrong, you don't have the fund balance to make up for that. So it is really important that we make sure that we're right on enrollment.
And if, what we appreciate about this chart is, the green line is a line that, if you notice, from the previous fifteen years, on the left side of the vertical line, that charts are declining enrollment, so there's the evidence of declining enrollment. Right of the line is a model, it's future, it's based on birth rates and projected birth rates by Teamworks and by Hazel Reinhardt, but this is Teamworks estimate. The blue line, as Chrissy indicated, is development that is currently accounted for at the county and city levels. And the yellow would be housing development that is kind of in the planning stages, or considered by cities of land that could be developed, but that is very futuristic. The difference between the green line and the blue line ten years out is five hundred students. The difference between the green line and the yellow line ten years out is close to a thousand students. That's the magnitude of potential growth.
Can I just ask one? Because I can't read this and I can't see that, so I'm just curious, what for sure are the, what year is this projected out to? That line down the middle, is that, that's, we're on the right side of that right now, in twenty-five, twenty-six?
Yep. So twenty, the first numbers right after the line are twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty-four, thirty-five, is where this one's.
Yep, ten.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
Moving on to the general fund, just looking again at the assumptions that we used, we have, based on the data, based on the numbers that we've seen, we've modified, we for several years, since three, for three years in my position, always did a negative one hundred students per year, we modified that, this year the negative seventy, which again, can be in the right direction, period of positive for enrollment. We increased per pupil funding, again, looking at the next five years in that, about two point four percent attending a year, that's an average. We know it's between two and three, because based on legislation, we have that inflationary factor in there, that they let us know in February what that number is going to be. With that though, when we put those two together, and we say with a loss of seventy students, our two point, two point four percent equals only about an additional five hundred thousand in our per pupil revenue in the general fund. So that matters a lot to say, you would be at about one point two million if you didn't have that declining enrollment. So it matters in how we're able to move forward and face some of the challenges that we're gonna talk about later in the presentation. Annual increases in the operating costs, cost of living, inflation increases, so that's on both wages, benefits, and supplies, is probably around about two point five million. So again, you see the discrepancy of how we don't have revenue coming in, that we need to sustain the program that we have. Anticipated changes in categorical funding, again, we're always watching the legislation and what they're doing, compensatory, we know that currently they're off direct certifications attached to Medicaid, so we, you know, see a future where, what does that look like? Summer unemployment, we know it's funded through this year, after that, it could become a district responsibility, we're unable to levy for those dollars, unlike our other unemployment, so that's a really important part. We did get, again, red act dollars, literacy aid, school support finance, that also dries up, it's one-time money, to be able to get our staff through it, but until college programs get those requirements within their coursework, then we still have a gap that we're gonna need to fill, and is that gonna be timely enough or not, or do we have to spend district dollars on that? The last point in our general fund that I want to make is that our grant opportunities, we are a district that significantly goes out. Huge shout-out to high school, they do so much with grant opportunities through the state, MBE on different programs, we saw Standard's coursework, Enjoy the Teaching last year, so several grants there, we've done grants with buses, camera systems, we have our Positive Community Norms grant. So when we think about, we always say that you can't just, you know, make up the revenue, the widgets, it's not a business, it's a school, right? So, but these are ways we can make money, and we do. So we're out for grants, we rolled another one for the cop security grant, for four hundred thousand that we just submitted here back in June, and so we're constantly doing what we can to go above and beyond to five dollars, to be able to do the things that we need to do as a district. We're gonna dig into revenue first, so what I have next is about fifteen lines worth of the major components of revenue. For the most part, you're gonna see that it's gonna be in that seventy-one and that twenty-two percent, so again, state sources are about seventy-one percent of the general fund revenue. Of that, about sixty-five percent of that seventy-one is that per pupil aid, so there is additional revenue within state aid that's just above that categorical funding that comes in. Property taxes are about twenty-two percent, federal sources are three percent, and then our other revenue is about four percent. So again, we're gonna just spend some time on what makes up that state, the two largest categories, state sources and then the property taxes. As we've just been talking about, that per pupil allocation, seven thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars for FY '26, we get that, again, per student, it is weighted, so on the chart, you see prior back in 2013, fourteen, they had a whole system of weighting, they simplified that down to today, where again, we only have all-day kindergarten, so we're one point oh K through six, and then one point two seven through twelve. Some of the good parts about that, especially seven, twelve, is we do notice that we get the uptick in our secondary schools, from charters, non-publics, homeschools coming in for those secondary, so to get that higher rate is a really good bonus for fourth grade in the one point two. Again, I think that's the largest source of our general fund revenue in percentage-wise, and that is mostly state aid comes from. I always take the moment to talk about the slide, and talk about the general fund, and keeping the per pupil allocation, keeping up with inflation. I think it's really important to note that, again, it's about fourteen hundred dollars under what the amount would have been if it would have kept up with inflation, which for the school district would mean probably about nine million dollars. So when you think about that, that's a big number of what it was if it had been indexed with inflation, with that moving.
I have a quick question on that one, and this is a question people ask me all the time, so I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot here. Is there a reason we selected 2003 for that starting point instead of, say, nineteen ninety or twenty-ten, or?
Yeah, I know that that's a great question, I don't have the exact answer for it, different charts will have different starting points in it. We use ailers for a very long time in this school district, and that's been their starting point, so I think for consistency reasons, that's what we'll.
Okay, so it's just the source, the data, and what they choose to provide?
Yeah, you will see other ones.
Okay. I get that question quite a bit, so I thought it was worth asking.
So the next part of revenue, again, extended time, so we know that we have great programming in our after-school, during the school year, and also in our summer school program, so that's at a rate of just over five thousand dollars, they can generate an additional point two membership for that, and the revenue is, again, used for the extended day or week or year programs. The district really does not, we do not make money on this program, in fact, we're probably really close every year, and looking at those numbers to just have the programming and then pay for it, so pretty costly drill in that respect. It is a hundred percent state aid that comes in, so again, we get about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that. Gifted and talented revenue, I put this up there, although only eighty thousand dollars, but I put it up there, it's thirteen dollars per pupil, must be used to, gifted and talented students provide programming, provide professional staff development, and it is a hundred percent state aid, but when we think about organization and the needs of our students, we know that that's a very inadequate number for what we need to do to make sure that we're looking at all of our. to make sure that we're looking at all of our students. But just that concept of think about all that we do for our gifted and talented students and the program that we have, and we know that we have to use several hundred dollars for that, for that per pupil in order to do that. Basic skills is a big area that we spent a lot of time on, specifically over the past three years. Again, it's based upon the number of students that qualify for educational benefits or freely used meals. It must be used to meet the educational needs of people who are, pupils who are underprepared to learn or with progress towards meeting the state or local content performance standards are behind. And so we have been watching the legislation on this because, again, we went from total paper applications to more direct certifications through Medicaid. And so our revenue, in my time in the district since twenty nineteen as controller, has gone up significantly, so we were about eight hundred thousand at that time and now we're up to two point four million. We also know that it can go back if they drop some of that. So we really need to be watching this one and making sure that we're having lobbying behind keeping the direct certifications as best as we can. English learner portion of this, so that's also part of the two point four million, it's based on the number of students with limited English proficiency, it's also only good for six years. So doesn't matter how they're scoring in their ability to speak English, it does limit it to six years in that per pupil amount. So one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, again, used for students with English as a second language. Again, challenges around that and needing additional resources just like our gifted and talented, we know that it's really hard when you have, you know, six buildings in a very geographically large area and might have small populations in each building. So you think about twenty students generating about twenty-five thousand dollars based on that aid, and how are you going to have a teacher for those twenty students go in three, four, and five buildings to be able to serve them with that dollar? So again, we need to use that per pupil to help make sure that we have our students being able to succeed with English as a second language. Transportation sparsity, about a half million. I do bring this up because we talk about transportation all the time and we talk about the needs there. And legislature did do something, right? And it always has been in place, the sparsity part of it, but we know that's not enough. So what we've been lobbying for is even after sparsity, even at the beginning, decades ago when we started lobbying, we still have a big deficit because of our two hundred thirteen square miles, square miles in the transportation. So we've been lobbying and saying, we need that deficit made up. It shouldn't matter how much you need to transfer your students, that's a basic educational need and it should be covered, fully funded. So again, state aid that comes in, we get the state aid that comes per student, we also get the, excuse me, yeah, per student, we also get the sparsity, but beyond that we still have a deficit. And so making sure that we're aware that that's a challenge when we look at our budget. Special education, revenue's about fifteen thou, or excuse me, fifteen million. And again, additional cost for writing required services. Again, when we think of special education, we need to remember that all of these areas, every single instance has to be tested against an individual education plan. We have, it has to be required. So we're not making these decisions to spend money in this area, that's not the point. If it has to be within the parameters in order to get the revenue for it. And so that is, we're, there was previously a growth cap on it, so that's been something that we've worked through in the district. So again, even if you have to spend, you have a high-end student that goes in and you're spending additional dollars, in the past, there was the growth cap that you couldn't even get the revenue for because there was a certain percentage that you got, a hundred five percent or whatever that may be. There was also, when they redid the formula, they put in a hold harness, which you've heard us talk a lot about, that hold harness. We finally threw, you know, working on coding, making sure all of our teachers and their pupil minutes, a lineup, we were able to get above that hold harness back in twenty-three, which is really important because, again, that aid jumped up at that point when we were able to do that. So again, a hundred percent state aid in this one. We do also get about a million dollars of the federal dollars that come in for special education, and that is, again, more around, we use that for tuition billing and then professional development. So it is not on classroom teachers in that category. QCOM or alternative teacher compensation, about one point five million on that, it's two hundred and sixty per pupil. Districts have to apply for this funding, so you have to apply to become a district. And again, when I talked about grants on a previous slide, this is another area on the next couple of slides that we're going to talk about, how Forest Lake has really gone out to get every dollar that we can in order to put that into the system and benefit our students and our staff. And so, again, this is a great area, example of that, where we put in the application, it provides great professional development for teachers, it also has them create goals in which they're able to get compensation for if they reach those goals, which is really great for our teaching staff. It is a split between state aid and local levy, and so we worked through that, but again, about one point five million on QCOM, that's the thing.
Real quick, is that something that they were talking about? Taken away from us?
Correct, so this, thank you for the question, yes. This legislative session, it was, yeah, as they look to balance the budget, it was talked about. Districts definitely did a huge lobbying in this area, again, as we look at salary schedules and the ability to compensate teachers. This is a huge part of that, and so losing that would be very detrimental to what we would have for, for that.
But we still have it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Did not, we did not lose it.
We have it for at least one more school year.
That's good.
Correct, well, yeah, and usually the, by any young soul.
Yeah, two years, two more years, okay.
Yep.
Okay, good, that was my question.
You never know, they can always come back and take.
Yes.
Achievement and integration, again, about eight hundred forty-five thousand dollars targeted at reducing disparities in student achievement based on racial or economic backgrounds. Plans submitted and approved by MBE on the three-year basis, you all are aware of that, we recently did our budget just this year, so you were all part of that board that did that. State and local levy split, again, on this one.
I have a question.
Yep.
So state and local levy split, is the eight forty-four split between state and local?
Yeah, so it's seventy percent aid and thirty percent levy.
Oh, okay.
Career in tech, this is an area that I love to brag about and talk about. So again, this is revenue that comes in, thirty-five percent of our expenses are able to be reimbursed through this. And so it must be spent on education, price book courses in agriculture, family and consumer science, BACS formerly known as school net, business, technology, industrial technology, and health occupations. This is really the, you know, career wheel. So we talk about what we see in the district and what we pride ourselves on in Forest Lake area schools, and this is it. So our ability to get students into career pathways that are able to explore, we started the middle school program, again, where they're able to hit all of those core areas so that they can really dig into them when they get to the high school level. So great, this is only for high school, I will say that, the reimbursement, but again, we've grown that program, it is a state aid and local levy split and about four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
So correct me if I'm wrong here, for the high school though, with thirty-five percent of expenses, that means essentially we're spending sixty-five cents on the dollar out of our general fund because we get reimbursement for that thirty-five percent. So it continues to behoove us to enrich those programs.
It does, as long as, so again, local, state aid and levy split, so that is something that we're always looking at, is you can't just increase it immensely because it will play into the levy and we always are watching for our next years.
That was my next question, what is the balance on this one? Is it always seventy, thirty, or is it?
No, this one, it is not, so it is based on the calculation, so I don't.
Okay, okay.
I can give you the line sixty, times line sixty-three, times seventy-three, but that's, we can show it to you, but it is.
Oh no, that's perfectly clear, yeah.
I get your way of thinking.
Chrissy, I would add that this is also the state's recognition that these programs are expensive.
They are.
When you have auto shops with lifts and welding equipment and the equipment that are required for these programs, it's the state recognizing that they're expensive. So the ability to not only reimburse the staff but also equipment allows us to sustain these programs.
Yeah, they drive such value back into the community immediately with our, for our graduates and for the businesses in the area.
And the workforce, right.
Yeah, and huge shout-out Mike Mira at the high school, if you have the opportunity, please stop and see him and thank him for all the work that he has done, the alignment. In my time here, we've been able to grow the program within the levy restraints and been able to, again, we have started even supplies. So cooking supplies are eligible, so not the pots and the pans, so not that supply stuff, but actual consumable stuff is reversible through the levy, that's something we've started. If you have the project that, in the industrial tech class, if you take a class project and you don't choose to do a higher level project that you pay for, that class project, materials and that, is reversible through the levy. So all of that work, Mike has really spearheaded to say, let's get every dollar that we can, again, within those locations of the levy, but to help the program and, and the district in our overall budget. Capital revenue, again, about one point four million based on an average age of facilities and pupil counts. Revenue is used to purchase capital items and improvements and it is, again, a split between state aid and local levy. Long-term facility maintenance, this one we talked a lot about, that was probably, I was thinking back to Tessa U and the acronyms and everything, this is one of the first ones, you were like, I got it. So long-term facility maintenance or LTFM, the formula, again, just like capital, is based on average age of facility and pupil counts. Forest Lake became a one A district or all facilities district four years ago now, I think, and again, that allows us to go above the cap. So the cap is at three eighty per student and we're able to levy above that to keep our buildings up to date and make sure they're not deteriorating. And so it's really important, this area, again, it's only funding that can be used on that building maintenance for repair. So we can't go and build a new facility with the dollars, it has to be replacement of what it is there too. So there's a little bit of, it can be a little nicer, but it can't be completely different. So. And that, when we go through, there's also opportunities like we just did, within LTFM, we did that big indoor air quality project at the high school, you'll see all the roofers over there as you're pulling in, and all the HVAC units going there. And so again, that's more of a pay-as-you-go versus bonds, we know we've issued bonds in the past as part of our long-term facility maintenance plan. And so in the general fund area, state aid and local levy split what we do there. We also do in the construction fund have those bonds. So if we sell bonds for long-term facility maintenance, that goes over into fund six, not fund one. Again, working on, the one thing I would say about that is we passed our twenty fifteen bond project, and at that time, we talked a lot about trying to upkeep the buildings versus having to do the one big hundred forty-three million dollar project in timeframe. So that's really the goal that we're working through, is trying through these dollars and the levy ability to do as much as we can with that. Safe schools levy, about three hundred thousand dollars, but a really important component, our police liaison officers, so again, thirty-six dollars per pupil unit. We do also include our intermediate district, so that flows through the school district in that revenue. So not all the three oh seven comes to us, so it goes to the intermediate also on that. It is a hundred percent levy and again, school liaison officers are what we use the dollars for, but it can be used for several other positions also. Getting into big pots of money again, again, the referendum, so now we're kind of shifting more over, so we've gone through some state aids, we're shifting over to that levy, so that twenty-two percent side of the pie. Again, referendum, just about six million dollars must be voter-approved, the revenue can be used for any general education purposes, so that's really important to note, that again, that operating referendum is really to help out that overall operations of the school district and not categorical areas. In November of twenty eighteen, the operating referendum was passed, this is a really interesting one that we've worked through quite a bit, but it was passed and approved for one thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. New legislation in twenty nineteen converted three hundred dollars of that amount into local optional revenue, which is what the school board gets to collect for referendum dollars, and so that's how we get the nine eighty-seven. So often when we talk about the public, we do get questions to say, wait a minute, you always say nine eighty-seven, but on the ballot or we remember in the committee other stuff, it was twelve eighty-seven, what's the disconnect? So that's the reason, twenty nineteen, the legislation changed and that three hundred dollars will go to the local optional revenue. It was renewed back in January, so for the additional eight-year term. And again, local levy and it does have state aid in there, again, we're not a district that comes into play when districts have a lot of agricultural land, they have a lot of recreational property, so when their tax makeup is different than state aid, they kick into some of those areas. We're not a district that gets that split in our paper. We got good industrial property within our district boundaries, we present at jail, we, you know, the good mix, so we really don't get that.
I have a question, sorry. I'm sorry, can you go back to that new legislation in twenty nineteen? What does that mean? What is that? Convert it three hundred dollars, what does that mean?
Yeah, so on the next slide, so.
Oh, sorry, did I get ahead of myself?
No, you're totally, totally right. Local optional revenue is the ability for the school board, so the state realized that sometimes the school board would need to have dollars available to the school district through the levy, and that's local optional revenue. That was capped at four hundred and twenty-four dollars prior to twenty nineteen, and they increased that cap. When they increased that cap to seven twenty-four, what they did is they took that off of what all the voter-approved numbers were. So they didn't add it, you couldn't go and have people have more, right? You could just have what you had and it shifted just in a different way.
So just a different, or, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, just a different way to use the money?
Exactly, different, well, yes. Different way the revenue came in through the levy.
Got you, okay.
And part of the effort from the state was to address districts that did not have a voter-approved referendum, so this gave those boards leverage or an opportunity to create that levy and that general revenue stream.
Thank you.
You might be thinking, Chrissy, back to the other slide, previous slide, if you go back one. You might be thinking, if we're at twelve eighty-six or technically nine eighty-six, eighty-seven, is there a state cap? The answer is yes, there is a state maximum. And I don't have that direct number in front of me, but there's about a thousand dollars, a thou, or a thousand dollars per student margin between where we're at and the state cap.
Thousand dollars per student.
So just a point of reference that there's an additional opportunity for this board and for districts that want to move beyond where they're currently at with the max. I can grab that, Chrissy, too, while you're presenting.
Yeah, yeah, so it is, yeah, about, I think, I think it was closer to fourteen or seventeen hundred, that's why I was just.
Additional?
Additionally, yeah, so, yeah. I just want to make sure that, yeah, we have.
There's quite a bit of in there.
A lot of it, how about that? I just want to make sure that, yeah. And so we'll go ahead and, so, and, and this, this actually, don't worry, we do not expect you to read the numbers, a hundred percent not.
Aren't just these dollars?
But what is, what we do, but what it shows is that, so highlighted there in the yellow, you do see Forest Lake, and you know, all of the schools, so this is all the schools in the seven county metro area, you do see Forest Lake in the bottom there. And so at our nine eighty-seven, you can see that also, orange lines are voter-approved operating referendums, and then the blue lines are capital project levies. So that's part of, at the end of the presentation, we'll talk about opportunities and maybe next steps. And that would be one of the next steps that I would recommend, is that we get ailers in here to talk about school finance and, and funding mechanisms that are available to school districts because you can see that there's an opportunity out there that we're not taking advantage of. And we should know, what is the opportunity, how does it impact the community, how does it impact the budget and the availability of resources, and then, again, make a decision on that. So that would be one of the recommendations for the end of the presentation. All right, I'm going to go on to the. General fund expenditures, so I was working on this chart today and I will fully say that I still, I'm going to make some modifications because. to make some modifications, because I do want to note, and I put it in there, but we see here, again, we look at salary and wages, right now listed at the 52%, 21% employee benefits. We do have purchased services at 14%. Again, the supplies and materials at 3%. And we do have capital expenditures in this year's budget at 10%. And that's really driven by our LTFM. So we know that we have a big year this year. We're coming in this LTFM adjustment process. And so in FY '26, we have 7.7 million. So I went back 10 years, obviously the highest number we've ever had. We often talk about the fact that we're 80% people, and we knew that that purchase services was coming in. And when I look at that number, I'm like, oh, 73. But I just want to make it very clear that it's not that we're reducing people, it's not that we're reducing benefits, it's that that LTFM number this year is significantly different than it's been in the past. And when we look at that, but we were to take that out, again, we are still 80% people in what we have. The LTFM funding is only available, it's not available for operating expenses, so we're not taking anything away in that area. And so I just need to be very clear about that, that although when we see those numbers, we're not seeing that 80%, we are being, and again, it's a big year for long-term facility maintenance, which will allow through this adjustment process. Going into expenditures, so we get a great binder of 600 pages that tells us how to create code. And I know some of you have code sheets, so you can, you know, decode it on the, on your own. There you go. So, but in this area, so they create categories, so they're the numbers, the program areas. And so for this presentation, we normally, in the first slide, you saw the salary, the wages, the benefits, the, you know, different categories. And that's what we report on all the time, that's the way that we do it. For this presentation, I really wanted to talk to and kind of do a different way to talk about it by program. And so the programs, we're just going to go through each one of those according to the UFRS manual. And again, that's the way school finance is reported. So regular instruction, so our 200 program series, that's going to be all of our activities dealing with teaching of students, so elementary, secondary level, community already has its own code. But again, what's happening in the classroom and also our co-curricular activities, so those are all 200s. And so on our expenditures side, we have about $30.5 million that we spend in the actual physical solely classroom teachers in that. Locational instruction, also classroom teachers, teaching in our locational areas. Again, that has to do with levy dollars, so it's divided out into 300 program series, so that we can understand what that is like. Special education instruction, that's our 400 series, and so that's going to be everything surrounding special education. So again, 17.6 million dollars. That number also does not include transportation, any current transportation for special education, that's going to be coming up later. But again, 17 million dollars that we spent in our special education area. Instructional support services, so our 600 activities for assisting instructional staff with the process of providing learning experiences, so technology support, staff development, all of our assistant principals, our deans, our media, all of that, paraprofessionals are in that area. So that's going to be about $6.7 million. Pupil support services, that is the majority of that, transportation is the main part of that. Also in that area is all of our guidance services, health service, social worker, all of those areas. So again, looking at those more auxiliary areas, but again, transportation is a big part of our 700s area. District and school administrations, so our superintendents, our principals, all of our directors of instructional areas, that's about $3.8 million that we spend in that category. District support services, so again, business office, human resources, so the people that make the district run and go through all those processes, census, all of our enrollment people, all of our community relations, vacations, 3.5. So again, paying 1,200 employees after this. Sites and buildings and equipment, so again, this is going to include those long-term facility maintenance salaries that we're talking about. Again, activities related to the operation, all of our custodial staff, all of that, 10.4 million dollars. Fiscal and other fixed costs, about $834. There's, that one is kind of the catch-all for what doesn't get quoted in the other areas. A lot of that has to do with some of the funding that we do around our certificates of participation, also around capital leases and those things. That makes up 88 million dollars, 337, that we have in last year's audit. I don't have specific slides. Nutrition services and community service are two special revenue funds. I don't have descriptive slides. We've worked all year and done a lot of things around those, understanding that, again, siloed funds, there's a fund balance of about 1.2 million in food service, between nutrition services, and then about 1.7 in community service. So again, their programs are being able to have their expenses covered and then also carry a fund balance. Food service, nutrition services does have a cap, so they've waived it the last couple of years, but they're typically in statute is a three-month operating cap. So you can only have a fund balance that is three months of operating expenses. Community ed does not happen.
So if you have a surplus in nutrition services, can you transfer that back to the general fund, or what happens?
You cannot, the state takes it away if you give out that, so you don't want to do that.
What's our current window?
Also, no, we're good, 1.2, so we're well within. Also, it is also about our capital, so we talked about serving lines from 25-year-old serving lines. Condi Ovens has allowed us, I don't know if you've looked at our Facebook page lately, but the food pictures on that are pretty amazing from the end of the school year. So it's allowing us to do a lot better, different meals and, and more things for students. So again, they're reinvesting that within their program for the betterment, betterment of the students and the program, so it's really good. Again, few service, same thing, we tried to a little bit spend out that fund balance. Cory will say that on an annual basis. He projects deficit spending, but then his revenue just, you know, kids sign up for stuff, and so he's able to continue to have that fund balance. But great programming, yeah, very, very thriving areas of the district.
Just a question, just getting back to nutrition services, I mean, I think there is a concern that, you know, the legislature has paid for the lunches now, you know, when things are good financially, but I think that could be a concern, that could be another unfunded mandate at some point going forward, so that's a concern.
Yep, I would definitely say it could be an unfunded mandate, could go away, right? And so then, yeah, I would say that we have worked in both areas, right, where we have the students paid and where we haven't, so we're equipped to do either one. If the legislature chooses to stop that, paying for that, then we would just go back to pay lunches. The, you did mention chargebacks, so, and that's on a future slide, and the answer is, so, well, you mentioned, could it go over there? Can't go over there, but we do chargebacks, so I'll address it now. But there are certain things that are available to chargeback for. So for instance, the lunchroom, again, the utilities used by the lunchroom or our staff program, they do use our principal's times in our elementary building, right? So if there's an issue where our school has childcare, the principal has to deal with it. So we do chargeback a little bit, but there's always back-to-back program, community education. So it's a well-defined process to do those chargebacks, and we do what we can in those areas to make sure. Cory, on community service, and Paige, and on nutrition services, will both say, we never would have our program be a burden on the district, right? If it's generated because we are in the building and because we are in need of it, we need to pay for it. And so that's where, again, those chargebacks come in, or also community ed buys a lot more because they have, you know, use all of our fields. So as part of the buildings and grounds, they, you know, purchase some of those items for the use of their maintaining the fields that they use. So great, great, you know, partnerships and ability to do some of that stuff. So we're constantly looking to see what we could do in the chargeback area. Other funds that we have, the construction fund we talked about, as you know, we sold the $10 million of the bonds back in May, and so again, that's deposited in there, used for the construction. We again have high school going on right now, we also have the education center, so that has been underway for the boilers. We were on the roof of Wyoming, that was fun, all the SAG kids loved to wave at us when we were up there the other day. And so looking at that project, so just starting on that winter project for next summer. So constantly moving through that construction. Debt service fund, again, paying for all of those bonds comes through the debt service fund, and the levy funds that. The bonds that we sold in 2015 also goes through that. Internal service fund is actually our medical and our dental fund, and so that's Fund Twenty. And we do know that that's next, and we know that we got an amazingly competitive bid, and we want to just take a moment, huge shout-out to everyone on the implementation team, Leon Martson and Coria, and Angie on that Health Easy. So we had that great bid that's going to hopefully cut that deficit in half in one year, which is very impressive. Transition went very well, July 1, we went live with Health Easy. We've worked with a handful of employees compared to double digits when we went with UMR, so the transition has gone very well for our staff, which is the most important to us. It is about saving money, but at the same time, we need that for our staff. We need to make sure that they're secure and protected. So huge shout-out to the staff there that has been working on that project. OPEB is the post-employment obligations, and small fund, able to sell bonds several years ago and then pay some of those obligations as we go. We know, again, that retirees retired, they remain on our health plan, we know that retirees have higher costs that are associated with them. And that money helps us make up for some of those increases. Budget balancing, so at the beginning of the presentation, I talked a lot about that concept of, okay, we get additional $500,000 in when we have that 2.4%, but that we have $2.5 million worth of expenditures. So you have to do budget right-size on an annual basis. And so there's a lot of work that's been done, and it's every year, and it's creative, it's innovative, it is just a great process to watch our administration team, the principals and everyone in the buildings, our teaching and learning coordinators, everyone trying to figure out, how can we get this to work and have the littlest impact in that actual classroom, class size, than instruction of students? And so that is so critical and important. School consolidation, again, great work on that, so $500,000 went in on that, reboundary work, again, just balancing class size and budget, we talked about enrollment, it is so hard, you lose 70 students in a school year, they're not one class of 25 or 35, whatever it is, they're all over the district. So you get to those super hard numbers, like 31 or 32, where you can't split the class in half, that's a very small class. But you also, 32 in class is a large size for, you know, fourth grade. And so, you know, just kind of working through that and those challenges. So the reboundary work also helps distribute students, again, kind of helping that area, also the shift over, immersion program, all of that. Solar panels and solar gardens, we have worked on that and will continue to work on that into the future. So again, we have our own solar panels on some of our buildings, our leased, we work with Solar Ranger on that, we also participate in solar gardens, where we purchase into them through Excel Energy. Ads is funding, and I know I did not do this through the acronym without the description, but again, it is funding for students that are just in that gap where they are behind, that they have not met any thresholds for special education. So it's a gap area, it's funding that we just became available for, so once we got post-hold harmless on special education, actually runs through that department. Once we got post-hold harmless, then it was advantageous for the school district to do this and to go for that funding. And so that's something that we'll be able to realize in budget right-sizing next year, the funding becomes a year behind, so it'll actually be two years out, we'll be able to, FY '27 budget, we'll be able to realize the funding that comes with that. But again, great work in the opportunity for staff to find a funding available that takes our staff that we currently have in place around interventions for students and pay for it in a different way that provides more state aid than we're giving. And so that's going to allow us to be able to, again, in right-sizeing, say, okay, we have this savings through the general fund, because we're no longer, we're getting, again, close to 60, 70 cents on the dollars that we're careering in. So we're going to be able to get that in and have that savings in the district. So it's a big thing that's coming up in the next two years. Right-sizeing annually, again, I just talked about those classrooms and the ability to see what classes we can get down in size as we move from, you know, kindergarten at a lower class size, the first grade, as we move from third grade to fourth grade, kind of that primary to intermediate, making sure that we're watching those classrooms and doing that. Also creativity and finding positions, you know, in all of our areas, including in this building. Chargebacks when available, I've already addressed with the community service and also the food service, the nutrition services area. Grant opportunities, I had mentioned those earlier, too, again, just bringing in additional dollars in those areas and trying, again, we have quite a bit that we get to bring in that helps us, but again, the one thing I'll say about grant dollars is, it's always timed out, so it always is for one to two positive community norms, it's our longest set by years. And so again, once that money's gone, we need to make sure, how are we sustaining or how are we setting this up to be able to either let go of what it was or continue it with district funds? So, but a lot of times, what we're able to do is bolster something to the point that it can self-sustain. So with enrollment, that sort of teaching grants, perfect example of that. Again, we get the students in, and then the students talk about it, they want to be in that class, we're able to fill it and have it be a section that's self-sustaining. So grant money helps us to that. I did also want to talk about the, future budget challenges, so kind of shifting more to the future, and this is something that really, it's a board discussion that I think is going to be a hot topic this year as we go through this, is the fund balance. What do we envision? What, what does a good fund balance number look like? Do you want a fund balance policy generally? And so I think that that's a great conversation that we're going to have this year, a much needed conversation, to do. Salary disparities, we know that we're behind in all areas of the district. We talk about that every time we go into closed session for parameters on negotiations. And so we are at a point, you know, a lot of districts did a lot of things with the 2023 legislative session, there was a lot of funding that came with that, a lot of categorical funding, a lot of big packages that came through in a lot of districts. And so we need to look at that and see our salary comparisons, what that is, and where districts are going. I do foresee that a lot of districts will be trying, needing to go out for operating referendum dollars to sustain those packages of labor. So we need to talk about that and also about how we, as a district, compare and how we can make heavy, big, big part of it. Unfunded mandates, again, we've touched on it a little, but I'll just kind of summarize them in the last slide. Fund balance wise, why is it important? We talked about two things already about it, why is it important to keep a fund balance? But again, we spend over $7 million a month, and so when our fund balance is, you know, that number once we get out of that LTFM adjustment around that 4 million mark, that's not even a month's worth of expenditures, and that's, it's tough when you're there in that way. Again, self-financial management has a long-term positive impact on successive students, you're not, you're more nimble when you have that fund balance, you're able to do things and make decisions about what you're doing. Sometimes we just have to make that decision because we don't have the dollars available, but maybe we could phase something out versus just doing something if we had a fund balance. It's different conversations. Various validates the fiscal credibility for reporting, you know, we look at the state map and where one's fund balance is, so a lot of reporting around that. And good credit rating, so we talked about the Moody's credit, we're very excited that we got that. Little footnote of a little bit of a, hey, you're going to, instead of a flat or negative, you're going to be, you know, or instead of negative, you're going to be flat out on potential, look forward. So that was huge, but- So that was huge, but again, that concept of that is something that helps us in our bond sales. Fund balance also, unknown situations. Again, the state has prorated their payments to school districts in the past. And so if you don't have a fund balance, that creates a cash flow borrowing system. And the, where you're paying to borrow the dollars. And that really hurts districts that are already in financial difficulties. So, and metering of payments, tax shifts, it's all happened in the past. So we just have to be prepared. Mandated but not funded programs, we're going to have that on another slide. Highly, higher utility costs. We remember, I think, your first year on Buildings and Grounds Committee, talking a lot about snow removal that year and how things get that was different. So utility costs too, all of it goes to play with that if we have a super cold winter or again, those really hot springs. Greater than expected inflation, again, just being able to be more nimble in that. Changes in enrollment or state funding at the beginning of this presentation. I just started by saying, we have to be conservative in enrollment because we have a low fund balance. And so all of that plays into how we're able to get packages for salary benefits for our employees. History of fund balance, going back to 2019. Again, we've hovered total fund balance wise, 2.5, 2.6%, then 2.9 almost. We went down to 1.8 and then we went to $362,000. So again, we've always carried a low fund balance. I came from Rose Valley area schools and I always loved when my former superintendent would say, we're using the money on the kids, which is accurate too. And so I don't believe that we need a 15% fund balance genuinely. I don't believe in having money in the bank just to have money in the bank. We do need to serve our students, our staff. We need to make sure that we're in that good position. We do need some. And so that's the, you know, kind of general discussion. Projections looking forward, again, we went the, I have yellow on here. We have that long-term facility maintenance adjustment. It's really hard to have that adjustment. I don't like it, please know that. It's unique in the state again, as we became that health facilities district, our fund balance in long-term facility maintenance was negative. And so the, there's only 26, 27 now, what a district. So this doesn't happen. Most people are not negative when they become it. So very unique situation in how that came to be and the timing of that. Created this need to create this three-year, four-year adjustment that happens. And again, we've taken our long-term facility maintenance dollars. We are not spending them in the general fund. We're holding them in our coffers until the levy catches up. And the levy is going to catch up in 2027, so 2.6, 27. It's going to catch up with us and they're going to take that money out of our bank account. And we need to make sure that it's there. So again, fund balance wise, just under $3 million. We were able to do last year to get there. FY '25, looking to improve that a little. And then by FY '26, we'll be at that $4 million and then more that balanced budget. So again, all of that plays into enrollment, you know, how we do on enrollment and other things. But that's just a projection looking forward. Going out after that though, again, so once we get rid of the yellow, the long-term facility maintenance noise, we're just holding stuff. We're not, this is a balanced budget. And so what I want to show now-
Chrissy, before we jump to the next slide, I don't want to lose this point that we have gone from under a million dollars in reserves and fund balance to $4 million. You hear us say it's still not enough, but that is dramatic improvement in just two years. Through the commitment with state dollars, we had those conversations at the board table. Conservative budgeting, we've been able to shore up the fund balance. So that gives us that level of assurance that we need. We think it needs to be greater, but we're really pleased where we're at today.
Does the increase up to $4? All right. Is that the closing of the one school, is that the saving of the money from doing that? Is that?
All right. So can I, I think this will, I think this will help.
Okay.
I think we got you. So, so when we talk about that, this is the genuine thing that is, is to hit home is the fact that when we say yes, we have savings, so $500,000, we anticipate between $500,000 and 3/4 of a million dollars in annual savings. What that does is, we know as a district, our revenue is not keeping up. First line said expenses go up by 2.5, general education revenue just goes up by $500,000. So what that does is, there's a gap there that needs to be filled and it varies per year, which is what this chart shows. But what that does is build that gap. It doesn't give us anymore. It fills the gap and makes us not cut, lets us not cut classrooms, increase class size. You know, really get into that, cut programming, right? So it doesn't add to the pot, it makes us cut less. Does that answer the question?
Yes, yeah, I get it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And great, great question. So this, again, the increased expenditures are not covered by increased enrollment. And that's a declining enrollment problem. It's also geographically, again, we're expecting additional dollars on transportation, other things. We're not keeping up. Our revenue is not keeping up with that. And so budget right sizing and adjustments are needed on an annual basis. So big numbers and estimates, increased wages, benefits, inflation. Again, throughout the years, I went back a couple of years on what that did, packages that we had and others and back to '23, '24, this school year. And then moving forward, again, we're looking at that between 2.6 and 3.1 billion dollars and what we kind of want to do. And again, those salary packages are an average of maybe 3%. So somewhere in that zone. And so we have to be able to think about when we're already behind and then what we're able to offer, right? And so then that creates the budget adjustments that we need to do. So we do get some additional revenue. There are, you know, some abilities to do that. But these are the cuts. So when we look, luckily, you know, the 1.25 rate enrollment that we had last year allowed us to cut less. That number always starts at $2 million. And then we figure out, you know, what we're able to do and how we're able to get to that. But again, the school closure made up $500,000. If you look at the, you know, for this coming school year, '25, '26, that $500,000 made a part of that 1.25. And so again, all those cuts coming through. We are also at a point that we don't, we have done a lot of work around those cuts and programming and really getting down to what does teaching and learning look like? What is the minimum there? You know, what do we have? What does our interventionist look like? What, you know, all these areas, what is it? And so these, we don't have areas like a school closure, like these big. Again, ads is a great resource to be able to bring more revenue in, more aid. 60 cents on the dollar, right? Be able to bring that into the district and help with that cut. But other than that, we're looking at classrooms. We're to the point that we don't have areas to look at to where we do it. When we think about a $3 million cut in '27, '28, again, you cut every single principal and the superintendent of the district and you've just saved that up. Like it's not a big, the scope is real in what that number is and what you would need to do with that. So the district struggles again to make strides. And I think this is one of, something that I really want to hit home on is, we know our employees are amazing, amazing employees that we have at Ford's like hearing schools. We know that around this table, every closed session, we talk about the fact that we have salary benefits. And how are we going to revenue that? And that's where we really get into the, I did have the unfunded mandates.
Before we, remember Christensen, did you have a question?
Oh, that's fine. It was more just like a comment. When I was new to the board, I was just think, you know, one of the, I think one of the best things that you said, and I don't have it exactly right, but like when we're a declining enrollment district like that, we cut, we cut like a million dollars just, or whatever the number is, just off the top automatically every year. So I think that was really important for me to understand that, that how the declining enrollment is, you know, a huge deal and we don't have control over that, you know, really. But so to think about it like that, that like, if everything is status quo, I mean, we're basically cutting a million dollars every year and you start with that and then, you know, work your way down from that. So I mean, that's just a good starting point, I think.
And we're obviously very encouraged about the housing data and the ability to cut from 100 down to 70. It's not going to get us there in a time limit. It's not. So, so that is a really important point. The unfunded mandates, we've kind of talked about all of them. But again, coration of special education right now, our special aid form on our Minnesota MD website is at 95%. So they're already looking at a potential coration. It has been there. That number's been there before and it's shifted up to 100 when the payments came. But again, we'll see where that lands in that area. Again, compensatory revenue, really looking at that one could be, you know, the million dollar bar for those big ones. Summer unemployment, again, can be an unfunded mandate that again, they covered through this year and if it continues for our classified staff, that would become a district responsibility. And coming on the horizon, the Minnesota family, paid family leave is also an area that again, right now is an amount that's going to go up through payroll. It's going to be split between the district and the employee. But is that genuinely going to be enough to cover what the program offers? And then will there be additional warrants around the school security? So again, it's, the presentation tonight, I know it was a lot of information and I hope it was helpful and good. It is really hard, as I was saying, with our employee groups especially, to know the disparities and to really think about what that future looks like. Again, cutting year after year, those dollar amounts that you have to come up with. Because if you add them up over the three years, you're already at, you know, the $7 million mark. And as I said, you can take out everything and all administration, all business, everything. And you still, and then you have it, right? But that doesn't work, right? So how do we work as a systemic life?
So, and just quick summary. If we model this out with the revenues we are expecting to get from the state, which we're grateful for the index to inflation. It allows us to predict what we might get as we build budgets. We're also really grateful for the operating levy that we currently have in place at 986. That is more than some communities. It's less than many others. But we're grateful for that commitment the community gives us. With declining enrollment of 70 students a year and the increases, the index increase from the state, our current levy in place, that still creates a $2 million hole in our budget every year. And that assumes that we're giving salary increases and inflationary increases to the budget at about between 2 and 3%. We will lose ground to other districts in terms of wages and salaries. And we're already at the lower end of the metro area and broader with wages across the district. So if we do nothing, we're making a $2 million adjustment every year, giving wages that barely allow us to keep pace, which is already behind other districts. So I think those are some of the challenges that we face as a district. And I think the opportunity is for administration to work with the board on what that might look like moving forward. What opportunities do we have? What do we value as a district? What kind of a district do we want to be? And what levers does the board have to address those issues? So we go through this presentation to bring the good news as well as the challenges that we face as a district and to arm the board with the information that you need to make decisions moving forward. They're big decisions. They're challenging decisions, but there's opportunity there as well.
And I would say that you nailed it with the question of what do we want to be, right? What, what does the future look like? Where do we want the district to be in that five-year period that we have? We do also know that it's not about, as we said, no decisions tonight and the conversation. We also want to say that like next steps wise, again, the ability, Ailers is an amazing organization that helps school districts identify these areas and what they have to offer. So the ability to bring them in at a future meeting, to have those conversations about what options are available. They also do a benchmarking survey on an annual basis with the districts that they work with. And so they have the ability to, you know, kind of let us know, how do we compare in different areas to this other school districts? So one of those areas that we've identified in the past through Ailers is transportation, right? And so we know that we have higher spend in transportation, you know, we have geographical challenges. We also know that we were able to go through a CISO two years ago and work with them and look at how can we combine routes and the concept of, again, yes, we're large, but we can run through a rural area and pick up 20 kids at an apartment building and then head to school instead of having a bus go to the four apartment buildings and grab the kids and eliminate that route, right? And so that has definitely been part of the process and again, instrumental in all of that. So they have a lot of really good information that I would encourage you to seek out and potentially invite them to that future meeting. The other thing, we've been working, you know, kind of on that review of salary benefits that we gear up for the next round of negotiations. What does that look like in comparison to districts? So again, just that data and working through that. So when we look at this workshop concept, that's something that I would highly encourage as potential resources for next steps is being the next part of this journey. Good, Ailers, and also some of your resources.
Thank you. Any, remember Castle?
So some of these items say state aid, local levy split, 100% state aid. The only one I see that says bond is the pay-as-you-go versus bond for the long-term facility maintenance. What about the outflow of the bond when people cash them? I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay, so you were saying, oh, so when we sell-
So when you sell bonds, people are going to cash them in and will have to pay them.
Yeah, so we have payments through the debt service fund and that's Fund 7.
That's the debt service fund?
Yep.
Because that wasn't mentioned during that discussion that I recall. Maybe I missed it.
Yeah, so we sell the bonds. There's a schedule of anywhere from, some of our bonds are 15 years long, some of them are 30 years long. And so twice a year typically around August. And then again, in February, we make payments on those bonds.
So they-
Debt service fund.
They mature in those 10, 20 years, but people might cash them in early, which would be-
There is, when they buy the bonds, there's a set payment schedule.
Oh, so they're paid off in that amount of time?
Similar to a mortgage.
Yeah. Yeah, so when you, like when we did the 10.7 million this in May, in that packet, there is, you'll see the August and February typically payments. So twice a year, we're just paying that bond. And again, as I said, the terms of the bond vary depending on its long-term facility maintenance. Again, the 143 million, those were a couple of separate bonds. But they again, have those schedules that go out up to 30 years. So often, a question that I get from the public that comes across my desk is, when is that going to be paid off, right? Or what is it exactly? And so then I'm able to, you know, give them information about, okay, our 2015 A-bonds, you know, will be paid off at this time or when they'll drop off. That's also something that Ailers will walk through. They have a great graph that talks about when things will drop off and show when that is. And again, that ability to keep the levy as stable as possible. So we're going to create those terms based on how we can keep taxpayers' taxes as stable as possible.
And what are the interest rates looking like with all the bonds that we have?
They've-
You sold that last round at the right time.
We did, I know. Yes. But again, we have great advisors. That's what, you know, again, we do a lot of stuff in-
Because that saved us a lot of money from what you were projecting it was going to be at.
Yes. Yep, it's significant. So, so yeah, I think it's a great, interest rates, yes, vary. Again, I would say that right now we're probably carrying 11 different bonds and the interest rates are all different, so I don't have those figures right off the top of my head. But again, yes, we've done very well. We've got opinions on a lot of our bonds. So I feel like we, yes, definitely, and again, save the taxes on that.
I think the expense side of the bond issuance has been pleasingly low considering where it could have been and- So we're getting relatively cheap money.
We are. And it also helps with, again, when we think about this delaying projects, we think about the cost of construction inflation. So again, you want to do that in the time, because again, we're in lower interest rates, and then we're also able to not have that inflationary construction cost.
So with fund balance, you don't need to pay interest, you just buy it. So I'm a big believer in fund balance, where you can do what you need to do without borrowing, because borrowing is just throwing your money away.
Remember, Christensen?
We're just asking about you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just had a, I like, under the next steps, I would really like to see a review of the salary and benefit information comparing to other districts. And I was just wondering, when, have we done, like, did we do that? When's the last time we did that, or?
We do it at, at each negotiation cycle, does. We do, I'm going to say this, though, and I will say that there are also, we also know our parameters, right? We, we know what the budget looks like. And so when we're thinking about this projection, we know we're behind. We know that we struggle in that area. And we also maybe want to go down this path to say, okay, if we see some ability to change that through maybe additional operating dollars, maybe a capital levy to pay for some technology that we're currently paying out of the general fund, you know, then what does that look like, you know? And then how does this comparison, what do we need to get us to where we want to be? We don't have that ability right now, because again, as a school district, we don't get to make revenue. We don't get to, you know, go, go get kids from somewhere else and put them here. So, you know, we got to do this. So, you know, this is also, we've done it, but I would say that we need a much more, if we have the ability to have these questions and have a potential, I think we could do a lot more.
I think that would help us to get back to your point. I mean, where do we want to be in five years? You know, I heard Dr. Massey say, do we, I don't know how you say it, but do we, like, north of us, we're, we're, say, you say that better. When you say like, north of us, we're doing okay south of-
Yeah.
It gets back to the central question of, you know, who do we aspire, what kind of a district do we aspire to be? And, you know, that is largely carried by the staff that we have. And that, of course, directly ties to wages. Districts to the north, we compare fairly well to. Districts to the south, we don't compare fairly well to. So it becomes a question of, who are we in force like? And what do we aspire to be?
Well said.
Yes, it is. It is, unfortunately, the drive ability to sustain you.
Oh, yeah.
Right bias.
Yeah. And that ties into housing and marketability on the housing side as well, so.
So I'm curious, okay, in addition to what Jill brought up, I'm very looking forward to see that as well. Also, is there a way to incorporate into that kind of a report something about turnover that we have? And, and exiting this, our system here, and, and your sort of exit interviews with people as what their reason, you know? Not that I need to know everyone and who they, I just want to know generally when people exit. Is it they've retired? Because I know that we've had a lot that have been here a long time. I also have heard that this is sort of people's, whether it's busing or teaching, training ground, and then they go elsewhere because they make a lot more money, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. A lot of that will be anecdotal, and Donna has done a great job analyzing wages that teachers are getting elsewhere when they leave, from our district to another district. So we can provide some of that data and that information. We do informal exit interviews when we can, depending upon when people leave and how they leave. But we, we do have some of that anecdotal information as well. I think that'd be very relevant to the ongoing conversation.
Jill will definitely bring that in. She knows that varies since the next four or five years.
Great.
People that will need to share, you know, kind of.
I have another question for you. In, in those areas where they say state, you know, where it's split, I'm just curious more on some of those, what they are. When you, the one you said it was like a formula you have to use to figure out what the split is, is-
Again, most of those, the, the main ones, like Q Comp, again, is looking for at about a third of levy and then two-thirds aid. And so, but, and several of them then are calculations based on, again, what kind of property are your school districts? So I list it simply because I don't want, there is a little bit of aid that comes in on some of those, or a little bit of levy, but for the most part, again, if it's levy-based, we are going to have a gift part of our levy, because that's the, you know, tax levels of our-
Oh, okay. Okay.
And again, it's pretty minimal. Usually the split isn't, the bigger ones I mentioned, more the seventy thirties and stuff, the Q Comp and Achievement Integration. Those ones are more plans that you have to apply for and kind of do. Those ones are more where you get that sixty to seventy cents on salaries.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Remember Castle?
It's pretty impossible to do donations that are physical hardware and stuff. But where do the dollar amount donations fall?
Under revenue, so.
Like, as far as what, what kind of percent are we looking at for that?
Donations overall in the district, yes, part of revenue.
Yeah.
So I would say overall, yeah, I, I would say that usually around four hundred thousand dollars worth of donations. But it could be, I know you guys hear the totals all the time, so that can be a low number. I'd probably have to get back to you on that. But I would say overall in percentage, so I did, there was that part. So additional beyond the two, we focused on aid and levy. There's federal funds that brings in about two point seven million, which includes our title programs and special education. The last one that's about three point four million is other funding, and so that's where gifts would come in. And that's, again, about three point four million total. Majority of that is your admissions, your participation fees for all your sports teams, the interest that we earn on that, and then again, gifts are in that category. So I don't, I don't have an exact number, but as I said, my estimate would be around half million.
So if people were to donate specifically to long-term facility maintenance, that would be in that bucket? Because that's where they donated it to.
They were all going to the general, yes, the bucket would be the miscellaneous bracket.
Any other question, remember Carter?
Well, I think the most, the slide that shows that we're, you know, due to inflation and all the many years, it's over nine million that we are down. So, I mean, that's, I mean, there's only so much we can do, I think, as a district. We do amazing with solar panels. And, I mean, every opportunity, every grant, everything we do above and beyond to try to get revenue in our district, there's only so much you can do. I mean, bottom line, it's, you know, when you lose students, you lose revenue. So we've been dealing with this for, since I've been on the board and many years before me. So, I mean, to cut, continue to cut, it just gets old. It cuts programs, cuts staff. I mean, we just have to see how much money we really need, what's a good number, and look for the future so we can, you know, as hopefully as housing developments grow, our students will grow, and we'll be able to, you know, keep to that number. So I guess for me, it's, we need to figure out, the most important is staffing, and how, and not to keep losing staff, which we keep losing. And I know that that is probably ninety-nine percent or ninety-five will be due to the fact that they're offered more money than other districts. I mean, if not, almost a hundred percent. There could be other reasons, but, but we lose good people every single year. So if we could try to, that's part of our strategic plan, too, is to keep our, our employees. And if we can continue to do that. So I think as a, as a group, we just need to really sit down and look at numbers and figure out what's going to make us be a more healthy district to be able to do all the things we need to do. So we're not battling that loss every year. So I don't know what the magic number is. I don't know, but-
So the magic number, last time, I mean, the committee work that was done, which I know you're aligned, you were part of that. The committee work was, was really the integral part of that, to say, you know, let's lay it out and then let's see what that number is. We know that we failed the twenty-seventeen question. We came back with past twenty-eighteen question at a higher level.
More amount.
And the higher level was a recommendation of that committee. So again, as we work through this process, it's really important, and it was so critical for us, especially, you know, newer board members, to make sure that, like, we're, we're rounding here. We need to build up with, you know, okay, what does our picture look like? Where are opportunities? And then where do we need to be? And again, that committee work in February, March, if we're planning to go over a question, would be critical in that process.
And any type of question, two years ago, would have been premature.
Oh, yeah.
We've done some hard work in the last couple of years with the school consolidation, other right sizing pieces, reboundering. We've done some really hard work to restructure the district, to maximize operations and revenue resources. And that brings us to the reality that we face today. I don't know what the answer is. There are levers, again, that the board would have to work with. But it's important that we do the hard work first. We've done a lot of that. And now we have to understand the reality that we face today, and where do we see ourselves going into the future?
Any other discussion?
I just want to say thank you. I, I think you take a very, you know, complex subject matter, and you've put it out nicely, even though it's small. Still can't read it with my glasses, but maybe it'll-
You've got the digital version in your file.
I need a magnifying glass.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at my printout, reading, looking for that Steve Jobs One More Thing slide that says, oh, here's twenty million in revenue we forgot to account for in all these lines previous. That would make things really easy for us.
We're looking for that, too.
That'd be nice, the magic money.
Yeah, that's not going to happen. I, I think in listening to the board tonight, listening to the discussion and seeing this, I think the Ailer's presentation is a really good next step. I see lots of nods here, so I would say let's do that. Knowing how schedules slip, I forgot to mention during the agenda this earlier, but our plan was to talk finances and strategic plan tonight, just because of, you know, staff members and vacations and just how that works, that slipped into the next meeting. So I don't want to be so directed to say, you know, come back in September. But I think we come back as soon as we can with that, you know, work internally, work with Ailer's, see what makes sense. I would rather wait an extra two weeks and get a more comprehensive view or for you guys to have a better understanding so we can answer more questions than to try to rush it. I think this is one of those topics we'll look at very methodically. So unless somebody objects to that idea, I, I think we tell the administration, come back to us when you're ready and, and come back to us and, and, you know, be, be thorough and have some, have some data for us, because we're going to want to probably get into it pretty deep. I'd like to echo the, the comments by a member antithesis here about really appreciating the format. This was, it was easy to follow, it was easy to understand. And I think you get probably about ninety-five percent of what we wanted to see in an, in an initial discussion like this. We covered the rest with questions, so. Unless anybody else has anything to add, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.